Chang, Delgado, Fauntleroy, Kurtz, Marsh, Randolph, Tibbet. Council President, we have a form, let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have invocation by Father John Thomas, Pastor, St. Monica Parish, Atlantic City, New Jersey.
Let us remember we are in the presence of God. Lord, this council now prays before it conducts its business because it knows that better decisions are made when they are made from the perspective of faith. Our faith tells us that God has given every person, every people, including the people of this great city, everything that they need to solve their problems, to build their future. Therefore, we ask, oh Lord, that you will grant the members of this council a confidence in their decision-making that comes from faith. Take away a false mentality of poverty and replace it with an assurance of abundance. Remind them, Lord, that money is nothing to be feared. It is a resource that you provide for us to accomplish good things. We do not serve money. Money must be at the service of the community. And, Lord, when we use money with a wise stewardship, ethically, we will master money. Money will not master us. We also ask you bless our new mayor Frank Gilliam and the newest member of our council. Grant them a spirit of cooperation which will benefit the city they are sworn to serve. And now let us, the citizens of this great city, bless this council and its meeting as we say together, Amen.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as required by law by the city clerk sending to the press, the Philadelphia Inquirer, and the Star Ledger on January 2, 2018, and published on January 8, 2018, a list of the meetings for the council of the City of Atlantic City, including notice of the meeting scheduled for February 21, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. in the Hank Tyner Council Chambers, Room 206, City Hall, 1301 Back Red Boulevard. And also a copy of said notice was posted by the city clerk on the bulletin board, main lobby, first floor, on the same date. All of the affers said complies with NJSA 10:4-6 et sec, known as the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Law, and NJSA 40:69A-179. This is a regular council meeting of the City Council of Atlantic City. Before we begin, please be aware of our rules in this chamber. All persons are to be seated unless all seats are filled, in which case you may stand against the wall in orderly fashion. We are asking that all gentlemen remove their hats. All persons are to remain quiet during these proceedings. This is so that everyone is able to hear what is going on. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. No one shall speak unless they are invited to do so by the council president. Shouting, interrupting, speaking out of turn, or acting disorderly in any fashion will not be tolerated, and anyone doing so will be removed from the meeting. When and if you are invited to the microphone to speak, please state your name and address. You will be allotted three minutes for comment. Please respect the time for other persons and end your speech within the three minutes allowed. If it is your intention to ask a question of council, you will be permitted to ask a maximum of two questions. Your questions are to be clearly stated, and after the questions are asked, you are to take your seat. The council president will determine if the question can be answered and by whom. Finally, please understand that there will be no personal attacks or name-calling. If you do so, your time will immediately be cut short, and you may be asked to leave. Reports and recommendations from the mayor. We have the appointment of Harry Ann Bernstein as an alternate member of the planning board, the appointment of Barbara Jean Lyles Belton as a member of the planning board, the appointment of Barbara Hudgens to the library board, and the appointment of Augusta Garrett to the library board. Council President, we do have a presentation of the Atlantic City Republic Library. Director?
I'm Boblin Caverson, Director of the Library. I'd like to introduce Wendell Cherry.
Yes, my name is Wendell Cherry. I live in Galway, New Jersey. I've been a reference librarian at Atlantic City Library for about 11 years. I'd like to thank the council for giving me this opportunity and the library this opportunity to speak about a program that we've been able to bring to Atlantic City which we feel is going to be a great benefit to the community, particularly to the young men in the community. Our program is called Fade to Books, and it is based on a program that was initially started in Long Grange, New Jersey. It's a program that actually places books in barbershops so that children can have the opportunity to pick up and read while they are waiting their parent to get a haircut. In cooperation with the New Jersey State Library, the Long Grange Public Library, and a foundation called the Bridge of Books Foundation in Homestead, New Jersey, we were able to get funding to buy the bookshelves that we need for each of the libraries. Plus, by doing volunteer work at the foundation, they donated a total of 600 books, basically 200 books for each of the libraries that are participating in our program. Since December, I've been working with the individual barbershops, placing the shelves, getting collections of books there, and putting together flyers and other publicity associated with the program so that we now can actually advertise and get local press coverage about what we're doing at the library. As you all know, everything that children or adults or anyone does has to start from the basis of having a basic reading skill. It's my feeling that the most important skill a child can learn is to learn to read and to read and understand what he's reading. I have a personal feeling that it doesn't matter that much to me that what young children read. It could be a comic book, cereal box labels or whatever, but I think all of these things kind of reinforce the knowledge or the ability to read so that as they get a little older and pursue other dreams in life, they'll be able to read and understand the material because even though we have confused, we have video, whatever, you still have to be able to read and understand the material that is being presented to you. So what we are hoping with our program is that by having the books right at hand in the barbershops, they'll be an alternative for the children. You don't necessarily have to listen to the music that's being played in barbershops or watch the television there. You have the option of reading books. We have geared the books toward young men ages 12 and under because if you talk to people involved in elementary school education, it is young boys who have always lagged behind girls in their reading abilities. So at this point, we are just targeting boys. Maybe at some later date, you may be able to expand the program and bring just young people in general. But right now, our focus is kind of limited, and we are concentrating just on young men. It is my hope that as the program progresses, the men will actually read at the local barbershops and advance maybe to becoming members of the library and using the library as they pursue further educational goals. What we plan to do is keep a record of the young men who are reading in the barbershops. We intend to have a celebration at the end of April for all of the children who participated. We'll invite them in the library, and as a reward for their participation in the program, we are actually going to present them with a discounted coupon that perhaps will take $5 or $6 off the cost of a haircut. The $5 or $6 cost off the haircut is something that a donation that I personally made to the library because I feel so strongly about the program, and I wanted to do whatever I could to help make the program successful. Do you have any questions? I'll have to answer, but as I said, I think the program would be a great benefit to those young people in the library and in the Atlantic City community.
Mr. Cherry, I have, there's two things. It resonates outside of the outstanding potential that this has. I'm very supportive of our youth reading. There's a program, I'm assuming that you're aware of, called the Freedom School Program that happens during the summertime that also does a similar. It promotes reading, and I think working in tandem with that type of program can help excel the levels of education as far as reading because we understand that there's been matrices created recently to find out and depict whether kids, once they get into, if they get past the fifth grade reading level, they have a less potential of getting into the jail, school of jail pipeline. And we understand that sometimes these matrices are being used against communities like my own that are somewhat at risk because they say, you know, we don't have access to books. So I really appreciate these opportunities to books.
I actually am very, very proud to be associated with the program, and I'm hoping that right now we have three barbershops that are actually participating in the program. It's called Just Cutting Up Down by Connecticut Avenue, Casino City in the middle of town, near Martin Luther King Boulevard, and Wally's Barbershop down on Bent Avenue. We started with those three primarily because the opportunity was presented to quite a number of shops in town, and those were the three who initially expressed a willingness to house the books and to help us with the program. I'm hoping that as the program starts to grow, other shops in town will contact us to contact the library, and we'll be able to expand the program further.
That's wonderful. Mr. Cherry, what I will say is I'll commit efforts that we have along with our friends and the connections that we have with barbershops. We built and developed some pretty good ones where we got free haircuts and some braiding for girls as well. So what we're going to try to do is we're going to try to match what you have and up you a few. Instead of getting discounts, we're going to try to get them free.
Oh, that's great.
We'll try to help develop a program so for X amount of books that are read, they only equate to free haircut. And then what we can do is to try to expand possibly. We love the fact that we have children, but I think we have a good opportunity. We could also engage in some of the adults.
Yes. Now, some of the barbershops in Long Grange do that. They actually give free haircuts. So it would be nice to do that as well here.
Yeah, we're going to talk to our friends, see what we can.
You answered my question while you were responding to Councilman Delgado. So I'd say, you know, we really appreciate the program, and I have a couple ideas of spots in mind, and I'll be reaching out to you if they agree to participate.
By all means, by all means. And again, thank you for the opportunity to speak to council and thumbs up.
Council President, have we committee reports?
This report comes from the Human Resources Department and is as of the 20th of February. I would like to first thank Ms. Irene Tucker, Director of Human Resources, and Yolanda Laney for contributing to this report. Contract renews and extensions. Atlantic Air got a one-year contract. Corporate employees' benefits had a one-year extension, and Delta Dental had a one-year extension. The City of Atlantic City participated in the Gateway Job Fair on February 13 and received a large amount of resumes and interest in residents working for the City of Atlantic City. The Human Resources Department developed a new revised employment application that is currently compliant with current employment law. The new application is on the City of Atlantic City's website, and fill out for individuals wishing to submit an application. Season hiring will be ramping up and within the next 30 to 60 days. The Human Resources staff has a reduction of 65%, and they continue to meet the needs of the city. And the department has had over 1,700 PAFs and related DCA forms and documents in 2017. The HR team is, according to Ms. Tucker, is dedicated and hardworking, and that can be seen in all efforts they put forth. They do need additional help in the department. I'm sure that will come as the time goes on. I have a breakdown of all the vacancies that exist in that department, and I just want to say at this time, commend Ms. Tucker, Ms. Laney, and the members of the Human Resources Department on the hard work you're doing with the less staff. But again, it's something we all get used to, but they've done it more than two to three years. So again, and I thank those in the administration who continually support them as well. Thank you.
The Information Technology, Health and Human Services, and Licensing and Inspections Committee met. Among the items that we covered were an update or a follow-up on online permitting for the city. It looks like currently the elevator inspections and mercantile application are the closest items to going live. There's currently some testing that is taking place internally, and in the very near future, you know, it'd be cool, next month, I could say it's live, but we're definitely working towards those goals of making more citizen interactions with City Hall available from the website for people's convenience. We're covering an item of procuring tablets for our inspectors to try and make their process more efficient, where data can be processed instantaneously. Got to demo the tablet model that the inspectors are using and get feedback, so we're pretty close on that one as well. There is now an opportunity so people know that they can watch the meetings off of the city website. We started that, I think it was last month. People now can actually give input as well if you can't make it to a meeting and you'd like us to be able to consider your thoughts on a matter. The email address is live, it's council@cityofatlanticcity.org, and it also is linked up to a forum on the website, so it gives people an opportunity to be heard if you're not able to come in person to our public portion. There's some jitney sales that are on the agenda this evening, and last item is a beach fire pit concept. The past committee is up for consideration tonight for first reading. The concept is borrowing from that in San Diego, and the idea is to have municipal fire pits along the beach in selected areas. The areas will be determined through a collaboration of the people that live in that area, the businesses, the fire authorities, but the legislation would enable this concept to have permanent pits that our residents could use to have small bonfires on the beach. And that is my report.
I just want to make sure that anyone who wishes to submit a resume through email, you can send it to hr@cityofatlanticcity.org, and of course, the city website is www.cityofatlanticcity.org.
Thank you. Public Safety and Public Works Committee met Tuesday, February 13, and the items that were discussed on that. Stockton State sent two representatives, George Chadwick and Alex Marina. Just for the listening audience, there was a brick-in at an automobile at Stockton. It was an isolated incident, but it hit the newspaper, and it didn't look well. So they came in to let us know that it was an isolated incident and that they have enhanced their security, and Atlantic City Police Department did their part because the person was apprehended within 10 minutes. So they wanted to really get out of the car, so they came in and let us know that they even enhanced their security even more. Tom Smith came in from the Atlantic City Fire Department and talked about the evacuation January 4 from Jeffrey Towers, and they did a tremendous job. Emergency management did a tremendous job. This past weekend, as a matter of fact, Saturday, everybody's back at Jeffrey Towers, so we're really happy that they're back, they're home, thank God. Went and saw them, they had a feeding Saturday, and got a chance to socialize with them a little bit, so everybody's back at Jeffrey Towers. We got some contracts on the agenda tonight. One is to repair generators for $116,000 hours. A contract for animal control services, which is $43,200, and a contract for fire alarm services is for $49,860. A resolution to accept a grant on behalf of the Atlantic City Fire Department. So I'd like my colleagues to indulge in it tonight on the agenda. That is my report, Mr. President, and thank you very much.
Webinar on Finance met February 13. We had a renewal resolution on tonight for various levels of coverage within the city's buildings. Our flood policy was amended. Last meeting, if you recall, we approved one, so we added one individual policy from the last meeting that we didn't add. Our workers' compensation SS policy renewal is the same as last year for savings of $177,000. We'll be discussing workers' comp cases. We had a resolution on for the tax sale. It'll be on the next council meeting agenda on the March 21 meeting. We transferred funds for $18,000 to cover 2017's outstanding bills. We dealt with tax appeal issues that will serve as a reduction to the 2017 tax levy. We calculated reserves for uncollected taxes. We authorized ordinance to exceed the municipal bond appropriation limit. We had a temporary budget, and we used $1.3 million to help with the purchase of police radios. We extended the contract for one year for corporate employee benefits and extended the dental for 90 days. There was various discussions on bulkheadings around the city. That's an issue that we take serious. And lastly, the legal contracts are up for consideration tonight, and I just want to mention to the public out there, past three years I've been chairman of Webinar on Finance, and I wanted to set the tone. Many of you remember coming into this meeting, and you would see change orders number 2, 3, 4, for $100,000, $150,000. My goal was to basically rein in the spending. Under my watch, there have been zero change orders in three years, and there won't be a change order period. I communicate with the state often, the administration, and let them know, look, your contract is your contract. And we're coming into the savings this year. Last year, our legal contract was $203,700. On the agenda tonight, I'm prepared to say that it's $2,715,000 for a savings of $355,000. Much needed relief for the taxpayers, and that's my report. You're welcome.
Communications and petitions are listed on the agenda. They will not be read into the record. So we are up to resolutions of recognition.
The same thing, if anyone here, present, for the resolutions of recognition?
92. And did you want to read 159?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. We wanted to, you said 92, am I correct?
Yes.
We want to call up ordinance number 92.
Resolution.
I mean, resolution, I'm sorry. Not a motion.
Move it.
Moved by Randolph, second by Tibbet.
This is a resolution of condolence to the family of Rafael G. Terregino. Whereas Rafael G. Terregino, 30, of Atlantic City, passed away unexpectedly on Friday, February 2, 2018. Whereas Rafael was born to William B. and Kathleen N. Byers Terregino on June 18, 1987. Whereas Raf was a lifetime Atlantic City resident. Raf, as he was affectionately known, attended Our Lady's Starry Sea Grammar School and Atlantic City High School. He was driven to succeed in whatever he endeavored. He loved music, endless great times, and had a one-of-a-kind laugh. And whereas Raf would have taken the shirt off his back for you, most important to him were family and friends. During the summer, he could be found barbecuing uptown, bringing everyone together. His joy and love, however, was his two-year-old daughter Cassandra, whom he doted over constantly. And whereas the city council wishes to pay tribute to the life and legacy of Rafael G. Terregino and recognizes his dedication to his family and friends, and now therefore being resolved that the council of the City of Atlantic City hereby joins in the mourning of the passing of Rafael G. Terregino and expresses heartfelt condolences to his family and friends. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fauntleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's eight, we affirm it, and we have a presentation. We're very sorry for your loss.
Thank you very much.
This reminds me, we live in a small town. Love it here. Thank you.
Now, may I have a motion to group 75, 76, 78, 86, 89, 90, 91, 103, 106, 108, 109, and 110?
Move it.
Second by Randolph, second by Marsh.
Okay, so we're voting on 75, that's condolence to the family of Yolanda Fade Gerald Shannon. 76 is condolence to the family of Johnny Robert White. 77, condolence to the family of David Mills. 78, condolence to the family of John J. Pomenteri. 83 is recognition of hometown heroes 2018. 86 is condolence to the family of Verna Anita Bailey. 89 is support of opposition to offshore drilling. 90 is the condolence to the family of Sarah Teresa Prusenda. 91 is condolence to the family of Alice Tunico. 103 is condolence to the family of Eugene Brunner. 106 is recognition of Ralph Hunter. 108 is a recognition of Alpha Kappa Alpha Serenity Theta Kappa Omega Chapter. 109 is support of A1738, expanding access to driver's licenses in New Jersey, and 110 is a resolution for a fair and welcoming Atlantic City.
There's an edit on 83, forgive me. Global Council President, he's aware.
Okay.
Oh, you want to just do it like that? Okay.
Okay, so we'll just.
And we'll add 83 to the amendment. I was going to let them do it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I?
Yeah.
Pulled it out?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, we're going to discuss that one separately. We're going to pull it, discuss.
Hold on, Council President, I think there's a request for, I know our colleague is not here for 110 specifically, 109 is ancillary support, but one of the pioneers behind it, I think, wants to be able to speak on it on behalf, is that the case?
I just wanted it separate.
Now, well, we're calling the votes for the resolution of recognition as a group.
To support it.
Is somebody allowing?
Well, yeah, we can.
Yeah, follow-up behind it, I'm saying, you want to make it.
Okay, so what am I doing with 110?
You can just read it into the record, and I'll let him say a few words.
So we'll take that one out of the group. So we'll take that one out of the group. Okay. So removing from the group is resolution eighty-three and one-ten. Cheng?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fauntleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes, and I want to register a no vote on one oh-nine.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes, I'm going to register a no vote on one oh-nine.
And Small?
Yes.
That's eight the affirmative, two negative votes, uh, Councilman Kurtz, Councilman Tibbet.
Seven in front of, I mean, six in front of the record.
Oh, sorry.
Six.
Seven.
Six.
One, two, eight members here.
Six to Kurtz and Tibbet, so no to one oh-nine.
Right, so we have eight the affirmative with the exception of resolution one oh-nine where there are two negative votes.
Okay, two negatives, got you.
Kurtz and Tibbet.
You're right.
Okay.
All right, I'll let you say a few words. No, you have to come up to the mic.
Thank you, Council President, I want to speak. Um, I just want to say to Council President, the council, as well as the entire audience, uh, that tonight is a big, big night.
State your name, so everybody.
Thank you, Councilman, my name is Christian Maria Rodriguez. Um, I just want to say tonight's a big night for immigrants with one of your votes tonight, and that's one-ten. And that's resolution to, to support making Atlantic City a fair and welcoming city for immigrants. Um, also, this is the first step and we are in, we have future talks with the mayor, but this is the first step in the right direction to protect immigrants here in Atlantic City from not only the federal administration, but anyone who has harm against us and anyone who wishes to see our community deported, who wishes to see families separated, and who wishes to see families destroyed. Um, I just want to thank you very, very, from the bottom of my heart, um, and in a way kind of restoring my faith in local government. Um, me just coming right off the bat from working in D C, nothing's working up there, so I came back here to see if I can make a change. And I thank you all for allowing me this opportunity to start that. Um, I also want to, uh, invite you all over the next coming weeks to, um, to some of the events we're going to be having, to meet some of these immigrants from the community. This is a shadow community and despite the fact that they might not vote, that they may not be here in City Hall, that they may not talk to you on a daily basis, these are people that call Atlantic City home, that have called Atlantic City home for the last five, ten, twenty, twenty-five years. Um, and so I hope that you are able to join us on the next chapter as we try to wake up the Latino community in Atlantic City and try to, uh, fight for ourselves. Thank you.
Okay, so I just want to be clear, will one-ten be included in the group vote?
Yes.
Okay. So now we have resolution eighty-three.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Moved by Randolph?
Second.
Second by Delgado?
Thank you.
Discussion.
Um, I, first off, I'd like to say thank you, Council President, for, once again, uh, allowing us opportunities to entertain the concept that we came to come and, uh, trying to promote to give flowers to those who deserve credit um, at all phases of life in different parts of the community. Um, and we have just come together through a nomination committee that was able to entertain from the community some nominations that came about, but really, some of the ones that we have, extremely proud of others, that everyone is an asset to the community. I think there was only one addition, and with all due respect, Mr. Small, um, it's just that you identified there, Mr. Small, and he's definitely going to be, uh, receiving an award at hometown heroes. I just wanted to make sure, just out of, out of respect to you and your position, and, uh, and as men, I wanted to make sure there was no malice. I think this was just an issue between, uh, Paul and I. I, I bombarded her with a bunch of information, it just might be a, a little error on my point, so I think it was my fault. But, um, you as well as, uh, some of the colleagues that we have are getting some awards of, uh, appreciation and credit. But, um, we thank you for this opportunity, again, working in tandem with a magnanimous group called Friends in Action, of course. You know, only people can rock pink in a meeting like this and stand out the way they do. Um, only outshining by one person in this, in this, uh, arena, I'm not going to mention Zul, but. But we're very appreciative and thank you for this opportunity to stand before you to celebrate our community, um, or being a conduit for our community to celebrate itself.
And, uh, you know, to the committee of, uh, Friends in Action and the Hometown Heroes Award, I accept your honor, uh, humbly, and I don't take my job or this community lightly, and I look forward to celebrating with everyone Friday night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, this was resolution eighty-three, celebrating Atlantic City's hometown heroes. And that was Joaquin Fernandez Lusiero, John Buchi, David Wang, Raymond Tyler, Laquay Sahir, Mohamed Zia, Pamela Thomas, Patricia Tatum, Alberto Lopez, Omar Blocker, George Crouch, Matt Darden, and Craig Callaway. Legacy awards to John Palillo?
Nguyen.
And Sister Grace.
Forgive me, Paul, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. There's a mistake on David Nguyen, it's Nguyen. N-G-U-N-I.
Not Wang, but Nguyen?
Yes, please forgive me, it's one of those type of things.
Um, I'm sorry, the legacy awards were John Palillo and Sister Grace Nolan. Lifetime achievement awards, John Thomas, Ralph Hunter, Joe Alexander, Joseph Palillo, and Joyce Ragland. Okay? Cheng?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fauntleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz, I'm sorry, Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's eight the affirmative.
And these are just some of the awards that we have. We also have, um, just to make some, uh, notion, we're, we're very proud to say that we're honoring the entire Public Works Department for being endless heroes in, uh, doing what they do despite all the barrage of all kinds of negativity, hardships, attacks at the jobs and the position. Public Works is getting some credit for what it is doing. Um, in addition to some, what is it, about fifty others? We get heavy when we want to say thank you, we get in that mood to say thank you and appreciation, and this is all done by a hundred percent from the community. There's no funds that come from the city, and it's done from the, the, the loving hearts that we have in the committee, in, in the community and the committee, so this is very appreciative.
Okay, we have resolution one fifty-nine, and this is a resolution to congratulate the Philadelphia Eagles.
May, may I have a motion? Right away, don't all speak at once. Don't all speak at once. Moved by Randolph?
Second.
Second. Second by Marsh.
Can I add an addendum to it? Can we highlight and its fans?
I support that.
And their fans, because basically the bigger win is not the team, but also the fans.
And the winner.
Not suffering.
Whereas, established in nineteen thirty-three, the Philadelphia Eagles compete in the National Football League, the NFL, as a member club of the league's National Football Conference, the NFC East Division. Whereas on Sunday, February fourth, two thousand eighteen, the Philadelphia Eagles won Super Bowl fifty-two. Their forty-one thirty-three victory over New England Patriots was one of the greatest moments in sports history. It was the first time in fifty-seven years that the Philadelphia Eagles won the Super Bowl. And whereas Atlantic City is home to countless dedicated lifelong Philadelphia Eagles fans who proudly and passionately support their team, representing true spirit and camaraderie. And whereas it is the desire of the council of the city of Atlantic City to recognize the determination, hard work, sportsmanship, and commitment of the Philadelphia Eagles and commend their triumphant rise from underdogs to Super Bowl champions. And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Atlantic City hereby congratulates the Philadelphia Eagles and extends best wishes for continued success. E-A-G-L-E-S Eagles! Go Birds!
Go Birds! Go Birds!
Cheng?
Hey, wait, wait, excuse me. Excuse me. Add Cunningham to the roll.
Council President, under, under my powers under Stabilization Recovery Act, I could strike this. Instead, I will merely say congratulations. Very, very welcome, congratulations.
Cheng?
Yes.
Delgado?
Uh, yes.
Fauntleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
On the road to victory, yes.
Randolph?
Go Birds, yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And then Small?
Yes.
That's eight the affirmative.
Go Birds. Figured, figured we'd lighten up the mood, yeah. Definitely. Saw a few sore losers there.
Were you ready to public comment?
Ready. What happened? What happened? Oh, yeah, good as a order, yes. Um, just a little housekeeping item, um, you know, we expect a lot of comment from the public, uh, particularly on the fifty-five million dollar question. Um, as I stated, uh, last week, uh, we know that this is a passionate issue. Um, we ask everyone to respect everyone's opinion. Uh, when a debate is happens, you know, civilly, uh, it's a, it's a good thing. So though some of us may be on the wrong side, we think is on the wrong side of the issues, um, we still want to respect everyone's opinion. Uh, we want to give people time to speak, but, um, we want to adhere to the time limit and, you know, we're going to, you know, move forward, you know, as a city. So I just wanted to put that out there. We had plenty of discussion, uh, last week at the public meeting that I hosted, you know, for the first time, uh, you know, since the state has been involved. We had all of their top professionals here amongst the people answering all the questions. And then last night, um, I afforded the opportunity, um, for a group led by the e- the Honorable Omen, Ame Mohammed, to hold their public hearing as well. So I know a lot of people, um, are here to speak on that topic, but just remember, second reading is a public hearing. You are only allowed to speak when second reading vote happens. Not because of welfare, you don't get two bites at the apple. So I just wanted to let everybody know that if you're here to speak on the bond, when the ordinance comes up, that is your opportunity to speak. You want to speak, you know, for whatever reason, to get a welfare at a time, it's starting now. So I just wanted to put that on the record. And if the clerk calls your name and you're here to just speak on the bond, just please indicate that. Because what we'll do, the process is, uh, we'll move the, move the ordinance and second it to get it on the table and we say, anybody have a comment on second reading? That's your time to speak your piece. All right, we good? All right, let's go.
Tom Forkin.
Council, good evening. Uh, Tom Forkin, eight nineteen Massachusetts Avenue. Um, I'm here to speak on the bond ordinance and also I have to put my ABC Chairman hat on and I wanted to address the open container law as well. Um, first and foremost, um, now I apologize for missing the meeting last week and thank you Councilman Small for explaining, um, the change orders and how you're on top of that because that's a major concern for some of these attorney contracts. I guess the solicitor's office has changed since I've been in it. You know, we used to keep more work in-house and save money. But with that said, uh, the bond ordinance. Um, I missed the meeting. Uh, I understand that, uh, Mr. Cunningham had listed a number of causes for our financial distress. However, he left out.
Hey, Tom, Tom, we're not having discussion on the bond when the second reading.
I thought that I could address that now.
I mean, no, you know better than most.
So I can't talk in that now, I have to wait?
Second reading, yes, I, I explained that.
Okay. Well.
Talk about anything else.
Okay. It's similar to, and, and I won't talk in the bond ordinance exactly, but it's similar to, like, if you give your children lunch money. Okay?
But you're talking about the matter.
You're giving your children lunch money and a bully.
We're going to let you speak.
Okay, but you're, now I'm using my time, I'm just trying to.
No, no, we're going to pause your time, we're going to be fair, start his time over, but only speak on other matters that is not related to the bond. That's it. I started your time over, giving you a fresh start.
It's an open, I thought we couldn't double dip, I'm not going to speak.
No, but, 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 but you're a highly intelligent person, you're going around awaiting double dip.
Well, all right. On the open container limits, can I speak on that?
Absolutely.
Um, I've spoken to a couple of other councilmen, I'd like to address that if I may. And I know that that was on, uh, the list last year on council agenda a couple of times, and it was pulled. If we could possibly revisit, uh, the open container law. And I'm speaking as the ABC Chair at this time, we spoke about it at the last ABC meeting. I think that, you know, our, our committee again is in favor, our board is in favor. I'd like council to entertain that just for limited spaces on the boardwalk and gardener's basin. And again, this opens Atlantic City up to, uh, you know, more of a, a Bourbon Street type of feel up on, on parts of the boardwalk as well as, uh, I know.
No pun intended.
No, no pun intended, exactly. But also in Vegas, Key West, and other parts of the country, um, you have open container laws and you're controlled, you're regulated, and you're revenue generating, uh, for, uh, for the municipalities themselves. So if we could quite possibly entertain that at an upcoming, uh, council meeting, that'd be great. And, and I did speak to Councilman Kurtz on this, and I think maybe we could get back before your committee on that issue and, and if we could, uh, address it, that'd be great. Thank you.
I, I, I just have a question.
Sure.
I'm probably going to know, with, I know the last time that we entertained this topic, the DGE asked us to pull it. Are those hurdles clear, whether it was concerned from the DGE, or you, or you haven't been?
Well, I've asked our solicitor a couple of times to address that with the DGE, and I don't think he's gotten around to it yet.
Okay, we'll, we'll make sure of that.
Okay, thank you.
Council President, um, since, since I was mentioned, um, and I'll say publicly, um, I'm, I'm definitely willing to. Uh, I'm definitely willing to engage the issue again, um, in the committee. Uh, we did that last year and it didn't make it to a full vote, but, um, you know, publicly, we'll, we'll deal, we'll look at that at the next committee meeting that I'm holding. And, um, maybe Mr. Cunningham or somebody else from the state could help facilitate, um, somebody from the DGE taking part in that discussion, just so to cut through the red tape, because I think that, um, personally, there's some good potential, granted, it's in a limited scope that makes sense to people. So, um, you know, all those assumptions there, I'd love to have people in on the conversation and we'll continue that at the next committee meeting.
Charles Goodman?
Nice to see the public involved in our meetings. Uh, first of all, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, real quick, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, sir.
Just need your attention a little bit. Uh, two quick questions. Uh, as far as directors go for, uh, the mayor, why hasn't, he's been in office now almost two months, why hasn't he had the ability to appoint his, uh, directors, knowing that if your concern is money? And, uh, so for money, it would be one person replacing the other person with the same monies, am I correct? So I would like to know, uh, uh, why he hasn't had the opportunity to put his own directors in place. Second thing, the streets, and I know this is a nationwide problem with, uh, cities that have a lot of snow, but our streets are terrible. There's holes everywhere. And the main street, we're talking about bringing people in. Look at our main street, Atlantic Avenue, man. You could ride up and down there and zigzag and hit, zigzag and still hit plenty of powder. When do we get a chance for at least a couple of streets to be paved, our main streets? And those are the public streets that the tourists get to come, but our community. No offense, Mr. Marsh, I'm in your district, uh, uh, and man, there's holes everywhere. That's, that's, that's monies that we need to make the city viable, okay? So I, I'd appreciate an answer there.
I'm not through. Mr. Goodman, you asked two questions.
No, well, I'm, I'm not through, yeah. Am I to give him an answer, a chance to, or to?
No, no, now, once you have a seat, he's, he's going to answer your questions.
Oh, oh, okay, but I had, I had one thing to address for you guys.
Okay, it's not a question, all right?
Well, no, it's to bring the tension. What I addressed you guys is mainly, I'll let you know, I come to meetings because people be calling me to ask, could you speak up? One is the, um, oh, Mr. Kurtz, you said the, uh, everything online, since you're the online person. I've gotten calls, why isn't the council agenda put online anymore?
That's a question, Mr. Goodman.
Okay, okay, I got you. The other thing, this is not a question, the Powell Building, and I'll show you pictures. This is a senior citizen called me about the Pow- Powell Building, the second floor, the ladies' bathroom. She sent me pictures with no, no doors on the stalls or nothing. And she says to me, how could the women's bathroom be like that? I can imagine how the men's bathroom is. And, and our community, she could not see, and I just got the pictures. So, uh, she could not see this happening anywhere else but in our neighborhood. So that's, uh, uh, this is not from Charles, obviously I have been in the ladies' bathroom. This is from somebody else, all right?
All right, thank you. All right, um, let Mr. Marsh go first, then Mr. Cunningham, you can address.
I would like to answer the Powell question. Um, we meet every month and, uh, there's someone there every day. And I don't know, I mean, she must be, may, uh, feel comfortably calling you, but she can get that addressed and if, if there's a problem, you know how to contact me, but someone's there at Powell every day. And if that's a picture that she took, I wish she had brought it to the Powell War Meeting, I would have got it rectified. But again, tell her she can call me, but someone's at Powell every day, okay? And that's, that's, that's inappropriate, that's inappropriate in order to have it like that, and we're going to take care. But if she comes to the Powell Building, or like I said, you have my number, you can say she could call me because you, we won't tolerate. say she could call me because you, we won't tolerate that and from your picture, I'll make sure that gets, uh, addressed. Yeah. And, oh, the other thing is, so there are more, um, potholes in the mayor and mine areas than anywhere else in the city. That's what you're saying?
No, I didn't say that.
Mr. Goodman, so-
I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just dealing with you, man. But so, so, uh, I'll get together and, and, and take a tour and make sure that if there's more in our area than anywhere else, then we will deal with it. But I can't believe you point out the mayor and I, you know, why?
That's Mr. Goodman for you.
Mr. Goodman, on the first issue, the mayor and I have had disputes on this issue. We're having ongoing conversations, including conversations today. I'm not going to comment any further about that publicly until we resolve some of these issues. On the second matter regarding the potholes, um, I've not been presented any, uh, plans that I've turned down for those repairs. What instead I've been doing is working with the, uh, finance team to develop a budget. If that budget provides enough monies to fund some type of, you know, capital improvement plan, then I agree with you, street, uh, street repairs are desperately needed in the city.
Council President, uh, just so Director Public Works knows, you know, during all the freeze, we had a lot of water breaks and a lot of sewer issues. And, and they may be very good at the job that they do, but they're not paving experts. And if you look at the patches out there on a lot of those brand new streets, the patch jobs are horrendous at best. And I know you have to have so many days of, uh, settlement before you can do the permanent patch, but if people have them in their neighborhoods, they could call the city and let us know to get those holes fixed before they become a bigger problem.
And I know, speaking in defensive public works, they have been doing patch up jobs and I know they're going to have to do as many as they possibly can. What? Thank you. But, um, I know Mr. Jerkins and his crew is working diligently to try to rectify. We need to find some more money somewhere. I don't know when and how, but we do need to find some money. But we are trying to, Public Works is definitely trying to at least patch up some of these holes.
Joseph Hanks.
Excuse me for one second, I had to put my hat on.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, President, Council, guests, and residents. You know, my sister was down there the other day and we was riding through town and we went past this schoolhouse. She said, what's that, a jailhouse? I said, yes, a jailhouse for the kids. Because that's what it looks like. And something needs to be done with that schoolhouse because it's terrible. The inside is terrible and the kids have to live in there and go through what they go through. And we got all them gates up there and the guards there just like a prison. And she referred it was some type of institution for kids, you know? That's terrible. And also to bring up, which is hard to say because I talked about the fire we had up at the inlet. That, that was the third fire, all right, we had in there. And you know something? One of those fires going to cause a problem. And we need to do something before this problem happens. Because when you bring kids who were raised in from the seventeenth floor downstairs, you had to carry them, you were very lucky. God was with us that time. The last three times, other two times, he was with us. But it might sound like nothing, but you need to do something. You know, the government starts tearing down them high rises because it becomes a problem. And when people live in one space like that, they get sink behavior. And they start acting very aggressive. That's because they're all in this one little area. But something really needs to be done about that one building. If you just take the people from the upstairs and bring them downstairs on the lower floor, it'd be a lot better than just letting it stay up on the seventeenth and sixteenth floor. Because once you have a hazard and someone just killed or die, you're going to say, oh, it shouldn't have happened. I'm sorry. And one other problem, when they've been discussing about the potholes and I can understand what happened behind the weather, we did a lot, a lot of damage. But you know, they're not potholes. They're car graveyards because your car goes down in them and it messes up your car. Add two finance taken care of already behind these potholes. And it should be where you also pass some type of law where if it's ever potholes and it's extremely bad, the city would pay. I have no expectation we pay for all of them, but some of them holes are terrible. Thank you.
Habib Ahmed.
Good evening, Council. My name is Habib Ahmed. I'm here from the Rolling Chair, I pushed Rolling Chair last nine years in the boardwalk. We have in Franklin, one company closed, other company peel our skin, thirty dollar to seventy-five dollar a week. We have the children and we are four in a year. We work to survive. That's all I have to say. Thank you, folks.
Friends in Action.
Hello, Council, Mayor, legislature staff, and our audience. Uh, want to thank all of y'all for your support of Anthony Brower, President and CFO of Friends in Action, twenty-seven fifteen Art Gallery. We'd like to thank y'all for your continued support. As council works within our community and our city, representing us, unlike a, and doing things, at times, sometimes odd to the public, unlike a, where there, where there is sometimes no recognition, uh, Councilman Tibbet is being honored, Councilman Chang is being honored, and our Council President is being honored. The committee, unlike a, did through a process, unlike a, you know, going through the selection of this time around because we only have so many hours to do that event in. At Dante Hall on this Friday, fourteen North Mississippi Avenue will be the event. I was, Cunningham, if you can be there, some of your staff. We'd like for y'all to see when it really happens because when Councilman Ogado is going to be announcing a hundred and nineteen public works, some of them are excited about getting an award for the first time. Some of those that have been recognized have never been recognized their entire life. And when the selection was and they heard Mr. John Boochi's name mentioned, a lot of people know who he is and, and he's done so much for people. And this would be the first time that, that they could ever recall him getting anything. So when the community actually thought about people who are heroes, y'all gentlemen have set a precedent in what people see as giving back to people. We just wanted to let the light shine a little bit. We work very hard in the community. The community works very hard with your council people. And I think the public, for the first time, if you come to Dante Hall, you will see, yes, I, I believe there's, to go get a red carpet, at least about sixty feet of red carpet, to roll down an aisle where our seniors are going to be celebrated, there will be some of the youth that you will see walking around to honor people, to hand them a flower and say thank you, okay? You set a precedent for them to mimic, to show what it's like to give and to give back. So we want to thank all of y'all. We hope to see everyone, mayor, we hope to see you there as well, unlike a, going Yippee, you know? You, they mentored you and some of them are your mentors. Joe Alexander said, I'll have a swim. Being honored, I'm like, hey, so there's some that, when you see their names, it's like, wow, I know this person. One of the, one of the students, when he heard the name Matt Darden, he said, Mr. Darden still teach? I'm like, so it attracts a lot of people when they hear, hear the people's names. So we hope to see everyone. I said, I'm like, hey, as we move forward to this one, it's Easter. So we look forward to seeing y'all both, you man. Thank you.
Kristen Moreno.
Hey, um, excuse me, Director Jerkins, uh, my colleagues, it's a little warm in here. Our, our, our new clock says seventy-eight.
Eighty degrees in the middle, they cook.
I know it's a hot vote tonight, but it's pretty hot in here.
Council President, I just have a quick question and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. And I might take back my statement in local government. You had stricken eighty-three and one-ten from the consent agenda. I know that because they voted no on one-oh-nine.
Listen, everything passed, everything passed.
But then there was a formal vote on one-ten.
It was, so it was grouped.
It was included.
It was grouped, okay?
But I thought that was stricken from the consent.
No, it wasn't stricken.
No, it was not.
It was corporate, so it allowed you to speak.
Then I want to, um, put on the record that both Councilman Kurtz and Councilman Tibbet voted yes to making Atlantic City a fair and open in the city.
Yes.
And, uh, I thank you, especially you, Mr. Councilman Kurtz. And once again, the rally's tomorrow, six to nine. Sorry for the confusion. Our main sponsor, Councilman Shabazz, is not here. So I, I allow, I thank you for allowing me to speak up. Thank you.
Hafiza Rahim. Glenn Crowder.
Glenn Crowder, Elwood, New Jersey. Just want to make a couple of statements, one with the veterans. Uh, they have a three thousand dollar tax exemption for every veteran. So on the website, this is one time thing that the president's doing. Another thing, there's, uh, we had a meeting in, in Hammonton. And any veteran having any, uh, issues with law enforcement, there's a prosecutor named Diane Rubington in Atlantic County. And they said, you know, give their file to her. And, uh, the other thing we're having, our, uh, our meeting in March twelfth at Resorts. And I just wanted to give a history of how I became involved in, uh, defending in, in veterans. I didn't choose just a direction to happen. Now, eventually, I didn't go to Atlantic City High Schools, I went to, uh, Oak Press. And, uh, my first time seeing Atlantic City High School people was my junior year at VOTEP. I mean, my, my sophomore year at VOTEP. My junior year, my father lived in Philadelphia and he was a police officer at Cheney State College. So my junior year, I went to Overbrook High School. And at Overbrook, it was a whole different school to me. And, uh, a kid on the wrestling team asked me to go out for wrestling. And it was the, uh, the middle of the year, but I decided to go anyway. So the wrestling coach told me to wrestle this guy and he was ten pounds heavier than me, but I beat him. So then he told me to wrestle this other guy and I beat him. So he started varsity, he was a senior. So he said, now you start. So then all of a sudden, I had to go to all these different schools, the Ivans, Anderson, Gratz. And, uh, I was the only guy to beat the guy from Gratz that year. The rest of my team didn't even want to, want to go. The same, similar thing happened with basketball. You know, it came to my, you know, to, to, knocked on my door, asked me to play ball. They told me to, had to play this guy one-on-one, gave him the seven, then the next guy, and then, then I, I, you know, was on the team. But my senior year, my, uh, my father and mother, they, they had a trip to Detroit. On the way back, they got into argument and they didn't explain anything to me, they just brought me back to, to New Jersey. So I'm back at Oak Press High School and I, this, I didn't want to wrestle for them. So I joined the military. I joined the army and they put me into the delayed entry. So that year, I, I, uh, was waiting, uh, you know, to go to the service that July, you know, I, I worked at Kessler Hospital. And I went to Fort Lewis, I wanted to go far away from, as possible, to my basic here at Fort Dix. I took, uh, my, my fellow soldiers, uh, some of them lived far away. And I took five of them, they stayed at my house, they went to Atlantic. Back then, you was able to see the ocean in Cornwall and this, this will stay with them for the rest of their lives. And, uh, you know, after that, then I went to Washington State. I was there with Mount St. Helens Rock. Then I went to Germany. Then I came back, I opened Trump Plaza. I was there, I was there from-
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
Tina Watson.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, audience, Tina Watson, one-thirty South Vermont Avenue. Um, I had a question about the Ohio Avenue Bridge replacement. When you submit your grant and if it's approved, how long will it take for the bridges to be repaired?
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Watson, I apologize for the interruption, but someone is speaking, so, thank you.
I work at the Venice Park School and the PSD program, our children are bused. The regular ed program, their children are dropped off by their parents. And it might be wise for the city to talk to the Board of Ed to see how this is going to affect us as far as the children arriving and leaving from school. Because they do service the children all over Atlantic City. So we would like to have a little heads up about, you know, if it's going to be a delay and the children arriving and leaving school. Thank you.
Gail Jabbar.
Any, any, anyone want to speak on that?
We're, we're working on that and I'll see her after the meeting and try and give her a better schedule.
Ms. Watson, have a conversation, Mr. Holt, um, either after the meeting or we'll go to executive session.
I can, I can speak to it if you'd like.
Okay.
Um, so we're still in the application process for the Ohio Avenue Bridge replacements. We haven't gotten to the point yet where we have a timeline. Once the plans and specs are prepared, assuming that we get the grant, at that point, we can provide a timeline and I'll be sure to get in contact with Mrs. Watson a little now.
Council President, I might add, just to, just to finish up, I think the, the proper thing for us to do from city-wise is to advise the school board so we can also include them in this process to ensure that, you know, at least everyone's covered on them.
Mr. Bar, your name is called.
Good evening, Gail Jabbar, Atlantic City resident. Um, I did hear Councilman President Small say that we're not speaking on the bond issue. That's the reason why I signed in, so I-
Oh, no, no, we are, um, when we come to the second reading ordinance, as well, say anyone like to speak.
Okay, you got it. Thank you.
Jennifer McLendon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not an Atlantic City resident, I'm from Piscataw, well, I live in Piscataway, New Jersey, born and raised here. Um, the reason for my presence this evening is that I wanted to come in person, um, and thank the city council and the current mayor for the resolution that you issued in support of National Recovery Month, which was last year in September. So my organization held a two-day summit at the Sheraton and we were able to bring together, um, consumers and behavioral health professionals in the same room. And the consumers were able to talk about how they experience services for mental health, substance use, and reentry. And so the event was a success and we are currently planning for this year's event, which will be held again in September, um, either again at the Sheraton or the Hard Rock if they are open and able to accommodate us. However, this year, we added a different piece to it, which I came tonight to talk about. Next month, on March fifteenth, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth, we will be at the Atlantic City Arts Garage. They're allowing us to use their space to film what we have titled AC Recovery Stories. So I wanted the city council and the mayor to come out and please, um, support that and add your voice to the conversation. Um, the goal of the project is to amplify the voices of people in Atlantic City who have been in recovery successfully, not just from substance use or mental health, but also people who have experienced incarceration, um, because their voices are not very well represented. And again, I would like for you guys to come out and just participate in the conversation. I could forward the information about the, um, the days and times to you again, so you can have it. Um, again, the Atlantic City Arts Garage is supporting us and also the South Jersey Poets Collective will be making a contribution to the project as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Schmidt.
Good evening. Uh, this is my first time at this meeting, so I hope you'll forgive me if I make some mistakes. Um, I was surprised when I looked at the, uh, legal bill, bills because I, first of all, my guess, I should find out, first of all, is Atlantic City self-insured? You don't have a liability policy for lawsuits? I mean, if, because if you're, if you're, I mean, is, can I get an answer to that? Because it really will inform my other questions.
Yes, the city of Atlantic City is self-insured, we do have an excess carriage.
Okay, I saw the million-dollar policy for excess, but you're self-insured, so presumably you have a law department. Okay, I saw the million-dollar policy for excess, but you're self-insured, so presumably you have a law department, and presumably those lawyers defend most of your litigation. So my question is, or at least my comment is, I'm shocked to see a million or two million dollars being contracted out to private counsel. I mean, there may have come, been a time when you thought it was cheaper to have, to do it outside. I, I would encourage you to do it inside, because I think for two million dollars, you can have a lot of lawyers working inside and doing this work. Um, most of, uh, at least half of that amount of money is listed as defense work. So I'm assuming that's civil litigation, defense. And if you had, if you don't have insurance, then naturally you have to have your own lawyers do it. In terms of, um, collecting of, uh, of fines and fees, I again question why you would have a contract, a dollar amount contract with an attorney, where I think usually the attorneys get a percentage of whatever they collect. So I would just encourage you to find, if you can, ways to save money on legal fees.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The collection contract does not have a dollar amount.
Stephen Young?
This being Black History Month, just want to make a few statements in reference to the Black community, as, as far as our leadership is concerned. One thing is very important, that the relationship with the state of New Jersey, who've been here for years, who continues to threaten council, how to vote, when to vote, and control your agenda. That's very important, because it takes away our right as voters to vote for someone who's supposed to do that job. Where someone that don't live here and don't pay taxes get to be the master over you, especially our Black elected officials. Mr. Cunningham, the statement that was made in reference to the Eagles, it goes a long way, because you have a veto power without using counsel at all. But to use them to be puppets, the rubber stamp, most of what the state wants done is an insult. Second of all, what exactly, this is one of my questions, what exactly happens if the councils do not vote on issues that the state wants done? What exactly would happen? I mean, does that mean that they have veto power, which they have in a way? The Stabilization Act actually puts us in a colony, in a slave and master relationship. Because I guarantee you, if I say, who from the state works in this room? Most, majority of them will be males, and they will be white. That's controlling the majority of our counsel, who is African-American. That's insulting, and it's outright racist. We need to talk about it. When you don't talk about it, try to hide it, it comes out a different way. My second question. Here it is, again, if you do not vote, what happens? Because they took our vote away, because it's very hard for us to say that you represent us, and we don't feel the way you do when you vote on things. And how is it that, and this is, this is my last question. When you receive an agenda, from my understanding, this agenda was not on, 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 um, the website until probably later this evening or yesterday, it used to be on Thursdays. It's, the agenda don't belong to council, it belongs to the state of New Jersey. And they select what goes on and what you cannot put on. So they, basically, you're doing their bidding for them. But keep in mind, the state of New Jersey, most of them cannot vote for you, because they're not residents here. The people that represent you, and that you're supposed to represent, that's who you need to show respect for. It's, it's about respect and what's right and wrong. It's wrong for the dictatorship from Trenton, and I don't care who's in charge, to do what they're doing.
All right, your time's up. Mr. Uh, Mr. Young, since you addressed council, I feel the need, uh, to address you on behalf, you can have a seat. No, you can have a seat. That's the process, have a seat. Mr. Young, have a seat. Um, I want to address your highly, uh, offensive comments. Um, when you say that people are being controlled. I think you know me personally, let me speak about me first. No one controls me in no way, shape, or form. Ask my closest friends, they'll tell you. I got a mind of my own. And it's mighty funny that all of a sudden, we want to say the Black community. I mean, we, we convenient when we use that word, Black community. The time for the Black community to fight ain't now. You a day late and a dollar short. The time to fight was when we was going to Trenton for the takeover, and some of you conveniently sat on the sideline and played both sides of the fence, while we literally spent hours upon hours at the State House. You was there, you know what happened to you there.
I got locked up.
But, exactly, but somewhere along the way, you went another way. So I'm questioning that. So when you sit up here and offend this council and saying people are puppets and sellout, listen. Cunningham will tell you himself, I got my own mind, you ask any entity of the state of New Jersey. I got my own mind, and I represent my people. We're not always going to agree, but as far as you saying somebody is a rubber stamp, you got the right string, but the wrong yo-yo. Next one.
Amin Mohammed?
I have two questions, Councilman. What happens?
I'm, I'm waiting for the state to tell me I can speak.
That's a tougher chance.
May I? Yes, go ahead.
Very underestimating.
That's your opinion, thank you. I mean, have a seat, I'm gonna let him answer the question. Amin, sit right there. Matter of fact, sit in the front row.
No one tells me to draw the center.
Council President, want me to speak?
Yes, yes, please.
Since my tenure here, every interaction and appearance with this council, I've purported myself with dignity and respect. I've treated all of you with respect, and I feel you've treated me with the same, I will not dignify that question with a response. If there's specific questions about what happens should action not be taken, I'll address that at the appropriate time.
Good evening, uh, Councilman Mayor. First, I need to be brief. Mr. Council President, I thank you for your professionalism you have shown this year, I am so proud of you. And in that, there are many things I disagree with you with, but that, I thank you for. And I hope we can continue this good relationship of cooperation. Now, I, there are several questions that seem never to get answered, and I hope what has been before me is not an indication of what will go on for the rest of this year of not answering the public's questions. So that's a good concern, I hope you intervene in that, since you're not told what to do, maybe you can encourage to answer some questions, because I have some right here. We had the public hearing, and I asked, Mr. Cunningham, with all due respect, and I talked to you afterwards, I asked you about specific funds that was directed, redirected to Atlantic City, mainly the ACA and the IAT money. I asked you about two thousand fifteen, I asked you about two thousand sixteen, in relation to the bridge loan, which was a seventy-three million dollar loan. You told me here, and it's on record, that those funds were not used for the bridge loan. That's what you said is recorded. Maybe you may have made a mistake, but I'm going to re-ask my question, that we had thirty million dollars for the ACA. That's, this is my first question, thirty million dollars for the ACA in two thousand fifteen, you can write the numbers if you want. Thirty million dollars for the ACA in two thousand sixteen, and three thirteen million for the IAT in three thousand, uh, two thousand sixteen, which totals seventy-three million dollars. The bridge loan was for seventy-three million dollars. So that's two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Two thousand seventeen is twenty-four, roughly, our mayor told us yesterday, twenty-four million for IAT, and another fifteen million for ACA, that's two thousand seventeen. That's thirty-nine million dollars. So we add that up, seventy-three million and thirty-nine million, we're up to a hundred and twelve million dollars. My question, that was supposed to redirect it to the city. We didn't receive any of the city's account, the state directed that money. According to your office, the Department of Local Government Service, they said that the money that was paid, repaid the loan was the ACA money and the first and second quarter of the IAT money. So we got a hu, one hundred and twelve million dollars that was supposed to be redacted, redirected to the city. So my first question is, do we, is that money was used to pay the loan, and we don't have access to that? That's my question. The money that all I mentioned wasn't used to repay the loan, and what was the balance of it related to that? My second question is, before, when we were going, and I have the document here, this is my second question, which is the five-year plan that the state rejected, uh-
Excuse me, I'm, I'm allowing you to finish.
Okay, like, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm summing it up like this. So this was loan that, this was the five-year plan that our former mayor, uh, guardian gave us, and he, it was rejected. Among the reasons was that there was additional state aid without an increase in taxes. Now, we still have an additional state aid, uh, state aid, and there's been no increase in taxes. Why is there a disparity between what the city could do and what the state is doing now? Thank you.
I'll, I'll address the Imam through, uh, council, and, and I do just want to say that, um, I did give my business card to the Imam after the meeting. Um, I was told I was going to be invited to the hearing that was held, but I wasn't invited, I would gladly come and continue to answer questions on, on, on this topic. Um, what I would say, uh, and again, there's a lot of, a lot of questions, I mean, I, I, you know, couldn't initially keep up with all of it. What I can say is that the, the bridge loan was authorized in a total amount of seventy-three million. That's my recollection. However, the city only availed itself of fifty-four million dollars. The fifty-four million dollars was provided to the city in a couple of different ways. And I'll acknowledge, uh, that I think I did misspeak. I, I, I do believe that I said the ACA money and the, and the transitional aid, but I do think that the IATs, I didn't think were available at that time, I'm, I'm sure I was wrong. I should mention, though, that's less than five percent of what was actually, uh, included in there. But the thirty million in the Atlantic City Alliance Fund, the redirected Atlantic City Alliance Funds, I think twenty-one seven in transitional aid and three-point-two million IATs, but again, that was used specifically for debt service, as the statute requires. Um, the city was in the midst of a liquidity crisis, it simply did not have sufficient cash flow to pay the bills. So the loan was processed in such a way that some payments were made directly, um, to other entities. As an example, I think that we, um, uh, provided the money directly to the school district. I think that's the example I remember, I think that was about eight million dollars that the state paid directly to the school, instead of giving the money to the city to pay the school. Um, and then the other money was, uh, you know, uh, uh, the, the money we talked about was used to repay the bridge loan. So, um, I, I, I guess in some in substance, and I'm happy to talk to anybody about this, uh, in, in, in great detail, in some in substance, I would say that all of the money that was redirected to the city of Atlantic City was provided to the city of Atlantic City, uh, or, or at least for use, uh, for expenses of the city of Atlantic City. I haven't withheld, um, any of these amounts, but if additional questions remain, I'm happy to have, uh, extensive conversations.
All right, thank you. Next.
I can't read the first name, it looks like Jalil Pravard.
How you doing this evening?
Can you state your name, please?
My name is Jalil Pravard.
Pravard.
I'm, um, I'm actually here just basically to, uh, let everybody know that I'm starting a group. And it's called Deeply Rooted. And I'm starting it because I'm deeply rooted in Atlantic City. And right now, when I look around my town, we don't own anything. And this is one of the, uh, objectives of the group, to get some ownership here in Atlantic City. Right now, we don't have anything to offer our children. And being an adult, being an adult here is, uh, kind of saddening. And we arguing about some really, really, really petty things when we should be more concerned with minding our own business, taking care of ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'll be outside, uh, later on, taking some deeply rooted people and putting them in my group. Thank you.
Johnny X?
Good evening, Council, Administration. Uh, a couple ideas on how to put some money into the budget, as opposed to geeking where to find it. Um, Airbnb, Uber, and Lyft. Uh, majority of people that do it don't reside here, but they benefit off of the city and what we offer as far as transportation and homes. Takes away from the hotels and the casinos, but what they do is put strain on Mr. Jarkin's crews, public, uh, public works, with extra trash, extra recycling. If you go around the Sixth Ward, you'll see an abundance of trash cans and recycling, and those people don't contribute back to the city and to, for the extra, excess cost for, for trash and everything else. So I would ask someone to look into as far as, uh, charging people to do Airbnb, uh, Lyft, and/or Uber, you know, some sort of tax, I guess, to go back into the city and disperse it any way you like. Um, to piggyback on Mr. Forkin's idea, open a container on the boardwalk in Garters Basin, I think will be a huge thing uh, for the merchants in those areas. Again, it'll give it a, more of a tourism feel, uh, more Garters Basin to where people can walk around and have a cocktail on the, uh, seawall over there, leave, um, Back Bay outside their little contained area, make it a little nicer. And another thing is, um, there are a few people coming into Atlantic City that are entertaining, trying to get their own license, avoiding using a licensee to do their events, uh, either on the boardwalk or at Bader Field. So I'm also asking that, uh, that's put to a stop, because we do a viable businesses that can cater and, uh, take care of those needs, uh, you know, food and beverage-wise, to where, uh, the employer can hire, uh, more people, uh, give them a chance to make a salary and gratuity, which we're, pretty much everyone makes their money off of in this town, is off gratuities, uh, as opposed to people coming in and getting free money from creative or whatever, and giving their own people money and taking it away out of the area, as opposed, as opposed to supporting their own households as well. Um, on a bright note, uh, Atlantic Avenue going towards, uh, Vetner, they replaced the lights with LEDs. It's a huge difference, it's better, looks a lot nicer. And to piggyback with that one is, is it possible we can, uh, put in the code in between multi-dwelling housing that the landlords use some sort of LED lighting to brighten up the passageways to make it safer for the residents and/or police officers, or code, or anybody else that walks around there at nighttime, to see where they're going, so there's no surprises coming out, or whatever, to hold on to kind of make it a safer thing. So, thank you.
Jeff Rosenberger?
Jeff Rosenberger, six hundred Pacific Avenue. A few points. Um, number one, I'm going to start by quoting Fannie Mae Hammer, "I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired."
Fannie, you're very annoying.
Oh, thank you. I remembered the quote, and I remembered the history. Steve had a good point, I don't feel represented. And she, uh, Mrs. Smith had a good point, why we have so many things for lawyers, which takes me to my next point. For every lawyer that says we can't sue, I still think we can sue the state. But now, why I'm standing here. I'm looking at a couple of recycled names, going into different positions, and I'm looking at reappointments for another five-year term on, on, uh, on the MUA. I watched Carol Ruffey and Charles Plidman gather five thousand signatures. I know they have my back. I'd like to see them appointed. Second thing, I am somewhat offended by the process. Many towns where I go and speak, I don't necessarily know if I have a question till after the meeting, until the points arise. To ask people to- To ask people to come in and limit them to three minutes when they might have four to say, eh, I get it, you have time constraints, let's limit everyone to three minutes. I've heard council go on and on and on with things that have been repetitious. Next thing, COs. It took me four hours combined to get a CO out of this thing with different applications and different offices in the fire department. What's wrong with a single point of entry? And I can't read the rest of my writing, but I will say this, as I look, listen to taxes on Lyft and taxes on that, I have no problem with paying taxes or collecting taxes from our non-resident workers who basically have all the jobs in the city. Thank you.
Carol Ruffey. Joyce Malino.
Good evening, council president.
Good evening.
Council members, mayor. Eighty-eight. Tenth budget. It looks like the, uh, police are taking up a lot of this budget. Uh, we're spending, uh, seventeen million in one night. And someone talked about this. None of it is going toward fixing our streets. Two-point-five million to purchase radios for the police. I think council president stated it was one-point-three, which is too much money to spend on radios at this particular time. We need to have more money in the budget to help the residents of the city instead of getting it all to the police. I got a whole nother issue with the police and what they're doing, but that won't be done tonight. Also, I, um, about the transparency for the, um, council agenda, we can't get, um, a hold of that. What's the problem with that? Why is it now all of a sudden, nobody can get that agenda until the day of the meeting? Because I researched it and tried to find it on the website that, uh, it, 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 when it used to be there. It's not there now. I've asked around and tried to find it. What's the problem with that? Why do we have to wait until we get here to get a copy of the, uh, resolution? Or go up to, uh, go up to the clerk's office and get a copy there? There's backup that goes with everything that's on this agenda, and we would like to see it before we sit down and go over it ourselves. Some of us do read, and some of us do investigate. So I'm not sure why this is taking place, but we'd like to have an answer for that tonight. Thank you.
As far as the council agenda, um, as many of you know, we have a new process, uh, with the state of New Jersey involved. And I'm going to take full responsibility as the city council president for the agenda not being ready in time because we had bits and pieces of the agenda, and I instructed the clerk, do not release the agenda until it was done. So this is a one-time situation. Uh, the agenda will be on the website, the next meeting in a timely fashion. And some housekeeping items that, um, my colleagues and I are going to discuss. Part of the backup is, we're still operating on a week before, uh, the council meeting committee system, which we had some packed committee meetings, a lot of topics were being discussed. And I'm going to have council rearrange their, uh, committee meetings to two weeks before the council meeting, so that way we don't run into these issues again. Basically substituted for the missed council meeting before. So I take full responsibility and it won't happen again. Thank you.
Council president, um, to add on the agenda part, and I, I should've said this earlier when Mr. Goodman was up. Um, I think I see the director of MIS here, and if you can hear me, um, we, we need to, I'd, I'd like to just confirm that on the new website, that everybody's familiar with the process of uploading the agenda. Um, not to, um, go against the point for this meeting, but I believe your comment was that there's been an issue with the public seat agendas in general since we've gotten the new website. So if we could just confirm that before our next council meeting, I think everybody would appreciate that.
Seventeen.
Evening, council, good evening, citizens of Atlantic City. I just want to confirm, uh, what the council president has said, um, we're working with the city clerk office and the town admin to get the agenda as quickly out as possible or closely done to make sure that, um, it won't be any third parties from our office or the city of Atlantic City. Um, as for the process of trying to find documentation, I welcome all recommendations and comments. Uh, work closely with council and try and get the recommendations on that. The agenda for those are not, um, able to find right now, it's under the city clerk's option, under the government website and document. And if there's a better menu option or better, again, still tied with me, um, open for recommendations. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
What's your name?
My name is Brian McCulca.
Brian McCulca?
Yes, sir.
How long have you been on board?
I've been in the position of director of MIS since, uh, December, sir.
December.
Yes, sir.
One of your choices? Was this one of your choices?
I did not, I, 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 I'm trying to say, I, I don't know a nice way to say it. I don't know this man, I haven't worked with this man.
Yeah, he works with the outside vendor who's providing, um, an in-house support team.
Okay, so he's,
He's not, he's not,
He's not the director, but he's acting as a director because he's part of, I, outside vendor.
Yes.
And we have a secured system with this outside vendor.
Correct.
Thank you, council.
Next. That's it? Let's move the agenda. Anybody else for the Goodman affair? Before close? Your question wasn't answered?
No, no.
Okay. Could you give Ms. Malino an answer to a question about the, the radio?
Yeah, um, Captain Sarkos is here, actually. Come up and explain the public safety issue with regard to the radios. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. In regards to our radio system, we currently utilize a Motorola analog radio system. It is ten years past its shelf life, meaning for the past ten years, you cannot buy replacement parts for the radio, including the antenna system. If we were to replace the Motorola system with a brand-new one, including radios and antennas, the cost would be approximately eight to nine million dollars. What our proposal is, is to switch to the county radio system. The county currently has an updated Harris P-25 compliant radio system in Atlantic City. We can use that system at no additional charge as far as the radio system itself, the antennas. But the cost that, uh, that we would have to incur would be the purchase of new radios, the radios in the car, and the dispatch consoles. However, once we make this move, we no longer have to pay any service fees every year that maintains that radio network. That cost is approximately a hundred thousand dollars. So there will be an annual savings of a hundred thousand dollars for maintenance of the current radio network, but there is that initial cost of purchase of equipment for the radio network, which is radios, mobiles, and the computer dispatch consoles. I can't stress enough, though, the current radio system, you cannot buy parts for it. We are praying every day that the system does not go down. If it goes down, we may not be able to fix it because we have to resort to eBay and other websites to buy used radio equipment to fix it. So that is the urgency with that network. But the police department did do its diligence in looking for cost savings, and by switching to the county's radio network, we're gonna save substantial amount of money than if we were to maintain our own radio network, which is what we had done previously.
Cap, can I ask, uh, council president, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Cap Sarkos, um, is this, does this system work in tandem with the new digital system that has, trying to, having, um,
Yep.
Where, you, you, anything that could become of a radio, you'll have an immediate text?
Yes, no, thank you for that. So the, the old radio system was not P-25 compliant. P-25 compliant is standards that were set by the communications division years ago, which makes all new radio systems interoperability with each other. So right now, currently, for example, Pleasantville gets in a pursuit, which this has happened, and they come into Atlantic City, they can't talk to us, we can't talk to them. Once we switch to the new county radio system, Pleasantville will be able to switch their channel to our channel and communicate directly with our officers because of that P-25 compliance. We, at the same time now, could do the same thing. If we get in a pursuit and it goes into Pleasantville, Agribank Township, Lynnwood, Norfield, any of the Atlantic County communities, we can now communicate with them. And I'd also like to note that we are the only municipality right now in the county that is not utilizing the county network. So our county tax dollars paid for that network, which we are not using. So now, we're gonna correct that and use the county network. Also, the new radios, uh, will have GPS tracking, so we'll be able to track where all our officers are, not only in the car, but when they're out on the street. As long as they have their radio, we have their GPS location. So there's a big public safety and accountability factor to this new radio system as well.
It links in with the, uh, camera system as well, correct?
Uh, it doesn't necessarily link with the cameras, but it is the P-25 compliant technology that's industry standard right now.
Thank you, cap.
Thank you.
All right. All right. To be fair, anyone else from the public would like to speak? Didn't sign in? Saying none, public portion is closed.
We have ordinances on second and final reading. Ordinance number one is a refunding bond ordinance, fifty-five million, uh, in the amount for pension and health obligations.
Mavamosh, move it, move by Randolph. Second, second by Marsh. Anyone from the public like to speak? This is on the bond, y'all. Anyone from the public like to speak?
Carol Ruffey, Chelsea Heights. I'm basically just gonna say the same thing that I said at the town meeting, is that I think that the issue that the residents are having with this whole, um, fifty-five million bond is, um, we know that the payments were deferred. We know that we owe the money. We were told to defer the payments by the state, it wasn't done by the city. And the interest rate on the health, um, deferment is two percent, and then on the pension, it's ten percent. And the statute that made it ten percent was made by the state legislators. So they, to me, it seems like they just pulled the ten thousand, the ten percent interest out of the air and can't explain why they want ten percent on that and only two percent on the health, the health benefits. And that seems to be the biggest thing, and it, it just feels like, it just doesn't feel right. It, it feels like we're, instead of the state helping us get out of debt, we're getting more and more debt, and we're never, ever gonna catch up. I don't have a question, I just had a statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just have a, um, question for Councilman Kirks. Were there any other options to doing the bonds? Because we had different people in the last hearing last week talk about other options that may be available instead of us getting these interest rates and taxes and things like that. Was, was there another way or was the state considering, uh, another way of, of doing this besides adding this extra debt, uh, to bond? Thank you.
Well, as, um, as has played out from some of the public hearings and some of our respective comments, um, there's definitely a difference of, of opinion. I'm of the mindset that, um, the state has exercised what I'm gonna refer to as selective statute waiving. And what I mean by that is, whether it's, uh, in the case of initially skipping these payments or in other things with Atlantic City, it seems that the state has been willing to waive certain statutes relative to Atlantic City, but has been unwilling to waive other statutes, namely the statutes that are being cited to kind of force us into this choice for a bond. We skipped this, so you mentioned alternative. And I feel that I'm, I'm at a big disadvantage because I, I don't have access to my own financial professionals, um, I don't have access to my own bond expert. Uh, but based on the research that I've done, it strikes me that if the state were of the mindset, which I believe is our position, to avoid a tax increase and avoid for the further bonded debt, that you couldn't even interpret this ten percent statute a different way. You could, because as, uh, Mr. Cunningham mentioned, that this thing was set up as a penalty, as a punishment to people for trying to skip these payments. And as you mentioned, we never, we never skipped that payment ourselves. That was something that the state had the authority at the time, the state did it, it was the state's recommendation. I don't even think that, and I've read the statute, I don't even think the statute applies to us. I mean, the alternative would be some combination of getting fresh eyes, whether it's Mr. Jim Johnson, who has a specialty in these complex financial matters from his time at the treasury, whether it's Sheila Oliver, the lieutenant governor, or Governor Murphy, somebody with a new, fresh eye set to give us some administrative relief and to select to waive those statutes. Uh, so whether it's that or, the other thing is, we skipped this payment in 2015. So I see the second idea is that we skipped this in fifteen. We skipped it again in sixteen. We skipped it again in seventeen. The same payment. All right, well, if, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna state, um, you know, what I, what my understanding of the facts are is that this skipped payment in fifteen, the whole reason why we even have a bond ordinance is that we didn't pay it back in sixteen, we didn't pay it back in seventeen. My mind says, what happens if we skip it this year and instead of IATs increased next year and coming in and paying for a new debt, that they could then kick in to do some type of collaborative payment structure with the state? So specifically to answer your question, I think that there are different avenues to go, but it seems that there's just not an appetite for that and that whether it's eighteen or twenty-seventeen or twenty-sixteen, it always seems to be the same playbook, that when we're short on money, the answer's to borrow more money. And I just, I don't like that as a way, and I, I think the alternative is in looking at a different direction to work collaborative, collaboratively with the state to pay back the actual, um, skipped payment and not this punishment interest.
I'm not a financial wizard, but I do know this. You'd be crazy to bond because it appears to me that somewhere, someone is trying to take advantage of you or and they're trying to use you. You can look into it and see it. They want, they want you to bond for some reason why, I don't know, but I know it's a trick somewhere and you're trying to be tricked. Don't get tricked. Better than being a trick. Don't be tricked. Thank you.
Good evening to the mayor, to the, to the mayor. My name is Yvette Matheson. I've lived in this city for about forty years and, uh, I'm here to plead with you, to employ you, it must be other avenues, just like Mr. Kirks was talking about. What I can't understand, since two thousand and ten October, the state has had jurisdiction of our town. There's, there's been no budgets clearly defined. And today, we want to take another bond out, more money, and old debt. We can't pay what we've got already. And you are our representatives. You're here to help us. And it has to be a meeting of the minds, somewhere where the state and our municipality come together and extend that time and help us, not make it worse. You only have between thirty-nine and forty thousand residents in Atlantic City. People are bailing out. Homes are default. Property, even the streets are bad. Stockton Cayman is trying to elevate the city. The casino industry, you all know where it's at. There's no guarantee on anything today in today's world. If you want to keep these people here, there are other states who'll get lower taxes, they can move to. Yes, it's a hardship to uproot and leave, and it's not easy to do, but we can do it. We can do anything we set our minds to do. And life is short. It's very short, I can say that. Guess I've got some gray hairs up here, but I'm telling you, you need to consider the people. And it's a small municipality, and the real estate might be ideally in the million-dollar, well, we do have millionaires down there. But the population is divided and diverse, and we know where it's at percentage-wise. And the larger percent is black. It builds up Asian, it's, it's, and the white Caucasian is a small percentage. Now, they're trying to moat and bring people and businesses into Now, they're trying to moat and bring people and businesses into this city. On what basis? Taxation? I implore you to consider this and consider your vote, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. Sonny Herron, I'm a city resident. But I love that jacket.
Thank you.
I think Councilman Kirk said a great logical idea. When does Mr. Johnson come to, is he here? The manager that the governor sent to? Do you know when he's coming to?
Nobody knows any.
Excuse me. I'm scheduled to meet with him tomorrow.
That'll be soon?
Tomorrow.
I mean, it'll be soon that he'll be coming here and helping?
I'm scheduled to meet with him tomorrow.
I suggest that you table it. It's, I don't see the urgency. It's been, like you said, it's been from 2015, 16, 17. We could be, when he comes here and meets with the mayor and comes here to look over on books, what we don't want him to say is, oh, man, whose idea was this to take out this loan? Should've waited, shouldn't have done that. Or he may say, that was a good idea, it was the best move, that was a smart move. But why not wait for him to come and do what he's, he's been sent here at the governor's, it's gonna help us run the city? I suggest that you table this vote on the loan until we get better advice. It can't be a really good idea, because it seems like you're split. Some people think you should, and some people think you shouldn't. I'm afraid somebody's gonna be saying, this was, this was the wrong move, wish we could do it over again. And right now, we can, just table it. The next meeting is a month? We only have council meetings once a month now? Table it for a month, maybe something will change.
I have a question, since we're speaking about, you know, role of the state and the professionals that he spoke about and their roles. As the Director of Local Government Services, you act on behalf of the governor and/or Lieutenant Governor, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Al McGlynnson. I'd like to ask the state, what guarantee do you have that the casinos are gonna be able to give us that money in nineteen, what was it, 2026 or somewhere around there? What guarantee? Because we're already in debt, but it's your debt, because it's been here since 2010, and you were the one who sent the finance man here, who was supposed to get us on an even kill. Now, if he did his job, we wouldn't be in so much debt. So I think the state should take some responsibility and try to get along with the people that do wanna work with the state. I will in a step back, but I do think that the state owes Atlantic City something, because Atlantic City's casinos have been taking care of all the outlying communities. We didn't get anything. I've been here for seventy-five years, and I've never drawn unemployment. I've worked, I have a couple of properties that I'm trying to pay the taxes on, and I'm a lot off better than a lot of people. But I do think you ought to consider the people, the seniors who have been in this city, who had Sandy's effect, who had to get their homes razed. The state gave them a little bit of money, but they had to go back in debt, which is, with the increase of taxes, is gonna run them probably to some nursing home, because they probably won't be able to take the effects of losing what they had. So, you know, I think you guys ought to wait, let the state go back and talk to the state, and maybe they can work with you to do something to help the residents of Atlantic City. Because I really think that even if I have to talk to the past governor, the present governor, or whoever it takes, and I hope some of you will come along if you have to do that, we need to really stop and think. So, thank you.
Excuse me. You know, the purpose of council, and selecting our leaders, is to listen to the citizens. I came in here, we have the debt, we have the debt, that's a gift. How do we proceed to pay off that debt, is what we're questioning. And with Mr. Kirk saying, since 15, we've known about this, what is another month gonna do? It won't hurt us, nothing's gonna happen. And so the idea of a person that just came up to delay it makes a lot of sense. And this, this gives the opportunity for US council people to respond to the citizens, and for Mr. Cunningham to take back the trend, and this is what the citizen, not just the council, wants. We gotta look at it in a different way and come up with a better answer. That's all we asking for. Let's work together, this is the first opportunity to work together, state, council, and citizens. We're, all we asking for is a better way to accomplish this goal, because we know we have the debt. Thank you. Please, please relay that to State House, Mr. Cunningham.
Sometimes, when you know you're gonna be killed, you might as well stand up and not be on your knees and take the bullet standing. So I'd rather be standing than on my knees before I get shot. Why am I saying that? You've been aware, council, that for, since 2016, I've been pushing this issue about the IATs. I just want us to do a little math, and the residents, it's gonna be us to take this fight. We can't depend on council, we can't depend on the state. We gotta do the fight. Just pay attention to what I mean by that. When we started this recovery act, according to our elected official, they told us last night, that we had roughly around $250 million in debt, if I'm not mistaken, that's what they mentioned to us last night. We're up to $345 million in debt. I have, and I'm not like Councilman Delgado, but I'm kinda leaning to him and his conspiracy theory, and I would like you to comment on it, and as well as Councilman Kirk. The five-year plan for the state to take over, in five years, that's gonna be reviewed. In five years, that's gonna be reviewed, but according to Mr. Cunningham's projections, city outstanding and projected debt service, at the end of that five years, we're gonna be at the peak of debt service, around $40 million. The highest we've ever been since we've been in this crisis. I don't think that's not by design. So when they go meet in Trenton, they're gonna say, well, they don't have any money, because we ain't bringing none in unless the cannabis works. We don't got no money, and we at the highest point of debt, forty million. This is his records, not mine, this is his estimation. Not only that, the pilot, which was giving the casinos the tax break, ends after ten years. And the IAT related to that is stretched out for ten years. But at ten years, when all the money is gone, that's when this bond ordinance is paid off. And we still got $25 million of debt service, according to that chart. So the design is, in five years, okay, they, they still got debt, they can't pay it, we need to stay. In ten years, when the casino scam is done, we're still in debt, and all of the money that was supposed to be redirected went to debt that they put on top of this. Because the money we owe them is not bonded debt. That's why they need to make bonded debt, so they can take our IATs. We're supposed to go back and pay our existing bonded debt. This is just my theory. I could be wrong, but if I'm not wrong, and that's why people don't like this ugly word taxes, uh, can I finish my last point? Okay. We have a meeting Tuesday at six o'clock, public meeting, where we got more than three minutes, Tuesday, six o'clock. Please have a public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
In Atlantic City, that's Jim Muhammad. If we can't do the same thing.
Hey, um, Mr.?
Good evening, Gail Jabar. What I wanted to address, councilwoman, is this. We collectively, on council, the residents here is holding everybody that we elected up here accountable for the debt we in to get us out, and I'm pleading with council to say this. Run the city of Atlantic City's government like we run our household. That debt that we got, pay attention. The same way that you run your household and pay your bills, and you got priorities, and you know what's legal and what ain't legal, run the city like that. I'm not new to this game, and what I say too is, don't vote for it. Let, let the states use a Trump card, so we can hold the state responsible, not y'all. We elected y'all, do what the people want you to do. We put y'all in there, we elected y'all, so work for us. Don't work collectively and pull your own agenda. Use the agenda of the taxpayers. We crying out to y'all. We telling you what we want. Y'all go behind closed doors, not all of y'all, but some of y'all, and y'all do what you wanna do. And Election Day, we working out behind all for y'all to reelect y'all, to put y'all back in office. We show y'all the grind, it ain't even about the money that y'all paying us. It's about the loyalty that we think y'all gonna hold up for us. So the state, this ain't, this ain't new, and like Councilman President said, it may be a day late and a dollar short, it never is, baby slavery went on for years, and we came out of that, 'cause we stuck together, we fought. And if it takes a riot, we on. Peace.
So, I'm just gonna reiterate what I said at the last meeting. My name's Michelle Kaya, new resident of Atlantic City. Atlantic City, by doing this bond, will become that indentured servant to the state of New Jersey that ties those knots on that rug, and the debt never goes down. There has to be another solution. We have to force them to come up with a better deal. This isn't for Atlantic City, this is for the state of New Jersey. I don't want to retire here and be tying someone else's knots to make a rug for them and never see that debt go down. Thank you.
Steve Young, don't take it personal. Let's keep our eyes on the prize. The prize is the state of New Jersey, the legislation and the law, which the Assembly and the Senate wrote, which the governors and the administration to, has the authority to carry out. That's where the blame is. Let's not take it personal, but we have to go through you, the ones we elected here in Atlantic City. Now, saying that, what is the deadline? What, what is the problem? What is the hurry for this, when we have the opportunity to renegotiate and talk about these things tomorrow, if the mayor stays meeting with the governor? I mean, you can ask for a special meeting anytime, if I'm correct, and deal with this issue. I'm sure they would tell you, have a special meeting and vote, and you would do it. So, hearing that, what is the hurry without the facts? Another question. How much is in the proposed budget? Proposed budget, which I know you don't probably have right now, to offset some of this debt? And how much money, that money the state gonna give you? If you don't know that.
It's thirty-four million for debt service.
And how, in this budget? This proposed budget is how much?
It's thirty-four million in debt service.
And that's for the, how much is the entire budget for?
That's, that's what you, I'm, I'm not gonna interrupt your time. We've been talking about debt service.
Thirty-five million in, in this budget, 2018.
Four. I think about four.
Thank you for that answer.
No problem.
The last thing is that, again, what is the hurry? They didn't answer that one, though. I mean, what is the hurry? What, what, I mean, is the deadline? Did the state say, did the governor say, look, you have till tomorrow? You have to do it right now? Please answer that question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council President, I had a comment about the timing question, because something that just dawned on me. I mean, this was an ordinance that appeared on our reorganization agenda, and there was something unusual about having a policy matter of this magnitude appear on our reorg, which granted, I've only been up here a couple of years, but normally are standard things about selecting our president, our officers, standard things for the year. We were given this very complex issue, as everybody, I think, would agree about this, very complex, with tentacles that kind of reach into so many facets of everything, including why we don't have money for bonding capacity to fix our streets. So I think that there's a lot of merit to the timing point, and I've heard some people say that they've heard from Mr. Johnson that he's, he's okay with it, and we've heard from the Lieutenant Governor that she's okay with this, but something doesn't sit right with me, again, to have a decision of this magnitude without some type of, like, formal statement from a new governor and a new Lieutenant Governor, who made it a point in their campaign that it would be a new day in New Jersey. And I thought Atlantic City was included in that, that it would be a new day in Atlantic City, when it came to the approach between the state and the city. And, and just one other point about timing, is that Mr. Johnson, while I don't know him personally, reading his bio and his resume, he had a very impressive position with the Federal Treasury. And the Federal Treasury has a big problem with debt, with treasuries, and with complex financial issues. And so, to not permit him the opportunity to give us some type of legal brief, because he's a lawyer who has some experience in complex financial issues, I think that we're missing an opportunity to borrow some expertise from somebody who's offered to help us at the behest, pardon me, of the governor, for one dollar a year. I mean, it would be nice to see what his take is, because lawyers, just like a lot of people, can look at the same thing and come up with different opinions. So wouldn't it be great if he looked at this statute and said, you know what? This doesn't quite apply to this situation. I think we can waive the ten percent interest and make it more accord with the performance of the investment fund. So those are my thoughts on timing.
And just, just to piggyback off of something you said, you're a seasoned campaigner. It's one thing to make a campaign promise, and it's another thing to govern. Next speaker, please.
Hi, great, uh, Ray Dickey, Atlantic, Atlantic City. I, I think what we're hearing today is the residents are actually backing up city council in some manner, where saying, look, we don't think it's fair, in my opinion, that these complex issues are thrown upon, you guys, and you get such a limited amount of time to come up with solutions. I just don't understand why there's not enough time given to city council, and it seems like the residents are pretty supportive on, on your side of this issue, saying, look, take a little bit more time, we don't know exactly what the right answer is, but the residents are giving you the time to work on it, and we'll stand behind you if it becomes an issue with the state not wanting to allow you to have that amount of time. And I just wanted to reiterate that Jim Johnson, if you look at his bio, it's a very impressive bio, and just to add on to what Councilman Kirk said, for a buck a year, you might as well utilize this guy if you have him and see what happens. Thank you.
Well, um, let me, let me cut to the, the Jim Johnson theory. It's one thing to look at somebody's bio and assume that they dealt with complex matters like this, it's another, it's another thing to actually know the person. And when I give my final comments, I will share a little bit of the conversation that I had with Jim Johnson today.
Good evening again, Council President, Council members, Mayor. I think it's a disgrace that a leftover administration is stating that you have to vote on this item, which can certainly wait. Not many times do I agree with the sixth board councilperson. But tonight, I do agree with you. This has to be looked at. It has to be looked at with fresh eyes, not the same administration, state administration, let me make that clear. Not the same state people that were here during the Christie administration. Therefore, we are urging each and every one of you to vote no or table it, like my colleague, the far, former firefighter stated earlier. We're urging you to table for review or vote no. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public would like to speak? Seeing none, public portion?
Good evening, President Council, Council, Mayor, and residents of Atlantic City. My name's Ernesto Chivari, I reside 260 North Nevada Avenue, Vice Chair of the City Committee, City of Atlantic City. And here to speak on the concerns of the residents. Uh, this bond, basically, a lot of people don't understand, me and Mo do. People not even look at the fact, that Puerto Rico got wiped out. House, plants, they had no water, no food, no nothing. But they're still fighting back, and they still, they're coming up strong. There's no reason why this, hey, this council cannot fight against anything that's gonna hurt our residents. When people up there in Puerto Rico are fighting, still fighting, and they're winning. And they're getting help from every angle, but most of all, they're doing fundraisers and everything else, raising a lot of money, and this one, the line, maybe you guys can think about. If you gotta do a fundraiser, whatever you gotta do, to take this, 'cause I'm hearing we getting in a bigger debt than we last was, at this point. And that's not good for our city. People talking about moving, people talking about leaving their homes, there's a lot of things going on. And I have to address that, and put that, and put a little light in your, in your eyes here, about what's happening over there, and they still fighting, they're not giving up. And that's what we should do here. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public would like to speak? Seeing none, public portion is closed, discussion from the dice.
Uh, Council President, I had something to add that I didn't mention previously, and I think in, um, hearing some of the comments, I think it's helpful. Two things is that, in order to even offer this bond, if it's approved, the state will have to waive, and one of our professionals can cite the exact statute, but it's something to the effect of a debt ratio statute, that a city can only have a certain ratio between how much debt it has, and how much revenue it has coming in. And my understanding is that we are above that ratio, so we need a special permission, a special waiver of a statute, in order to make that happen. And I just wish that that same selective statute waiving were applied to the interest instead, to give us a good, um, good deal. So, the point one. Point two is that, when I was reading over the materials, and I want to commend the professionals from the state and Mr. Cunningham for his professionalism with the public hearing and sharing information, when I was looking at the debt schedule of what we're gonna have to pay back, it's actually kind of deceptive that we've been calling it a fifty-five million dollar bond. 'Cause in essence, it's gonna be roughly sixty-three million dollars worth of public money that's gonna pay back this scheme over multiple years. When you take the initial payment that the state had us skip in fifteen, which is thirty-eight million, and you subtract that from the sixty-three million that this scheme commits you and I, public money, to pay for, you come up with the number twenty-five million. And based on the conversation about our roads and the Ohio Avenue Bridge, the safety concerns, our technology infrastructure, our ability to repair our bulkheads, basically our ability to do anything on our own, with our own bonding capacity, it's remarkable to think what that twenty-five million dollars could do other than pay back this punishment interest, pay back bonds, and pay back professional fees. Thank you, Mr. President.
I just wanted to make sure you finish.
Alright.
Any other comments? Alright, seeing none, I'm gonna take the floor. Um, as you know, like I said, during the public hearing, you know, speaking to people multiple times per day, people know who they are on this issue. Like I said, it's not us versus you. As I stated in the public hearing, just because we sit up here, we don't get a perk to say that we exempt from paying taxes. So, what affect you, affect us, on different levels, some more than others, but it's a fact. Listen, I've been fighting this fight, and members of council have been fighting this fight since shortly November two thousand fifteen, when we got wind that other people from outside of the area was gathered at Drunk Wackett, which is the governor's mansion, and started, quote, divvying up the city without any representation from any elected official. Where people seem to fail to realize, the original state takeover bill was fifteen years. I met with the Senate President Steve Sweeney, January sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, at Gino's Restaurant, for two and a half hours. For my fight, the bill was cut down to five, and we said that it's five years too many, so we gonna fight you on it. Some people made decisions that are affecting the states today. That's why I said I'm glad that, uh, people were coming to the party and, uh, joining the fight. And I don't mean to disrespect anyone by saying, you know, you a day late and a dollar short. I'm saying, you know, the time that shut Trenton down was five hundred, a thousand strong outside that state house. Maybe it would've been different, maybe not. But we had an obligation as a community. And me personally, when we put things on our social media, and we talked to people, other things, I get five million comments, twenty-four hundred views. But when I posted that we had six buses to go up to Trenton to fight, it was the most embarrassing situation that I've been in. We had to tell buses to hide around the corner. And those of you who rode, rode that bus, y'all know we telling the truth. We couldn't even fill up one bus, sickening. So like I said, I'm glad everyone is at the table now. It's important. In two thousand fifteen, the state of New Jersey closed our budget shortfall, a hundred and one million. You wanna talk about numbers? Remember two thousand fourteen, two thousand thirteen, the city had a fifty-three percent tax increase. Twenty-nine percent one year, fourteen the next year. Resident groups rallied outside of City Hall, right in the courtyard, rallied at Creta. Fifty-three percent tax increase. The state comes in, say, look, Atlantic City, look, we're gonna help you. It is no way that we're gonna allow you to put the monumental tax increase by paying the pension and health benefits. The state benefited us. And as I stated, I've heard, you know, I've, I've been keeping this profession, 'cause we can agree to disagree. I've heard some of the negative comments that I'm the worst City Council President in history. That's a matter of opinion, I get that. When you sit in this seat, all the pressure comes. I got that, quote, "I'm doing the state's bidding, I'm the state's boy." If anybody, if anyone that is not the state's boy, and has had a history with the state professionally, personally, and politically, decisions that were made by the state is affecting me and my family for the rest of our lives. But I'm still here representing the people, something that we wanted to do. So when the state of New Jersey says, "Don't pay pension and health, we're gonna do it in two thousand eighteen", that's what we have to do. So for people to sit up here and say they didn't know about it, or, you know, any other excuse, is disingenuine and ingenuine. That was for you.
That was for Jeff.
But, I, I mean, we, we have to keep it real with each other. Everyone knew. So, we had this on the reorganization agenda, I allowed it to go on, first week. It was voted on. Then we brought it back, January seventeenth. People said, hey, Murphy just got sworn in yesterday, let's just take a pause. Let's see the new administrations feel.
That's right.
Every Friday, well, not every Friday sometimes, but the majority of the Fridays, there's a budget meeting. I'm the Chair of Revenue and Finance. I'm either in there in person or on a conference call, and we discuss these matters. And contrary to popular belief, like, Tim Cunningham ain't the boss, he's the face. Sheila Oliver's the boss.
That's right.
And Sheila Oliver said, under no circumstances will the state, A, defer on it, let the city keep the money, or any percentage of the interest rate. Those are facts. So to sit here and say that, can we talk to Sheila Oliver and Johnson, is basically attacking Mr. Cunningham's credibility, that he basically came to the city and told us that Sheila Oliver, Sheila Oliver said something that she didn't. Listen, everybody is briefed on this issue. I wanna speak about Jim Johnson, we had a discussion today. Some people don't understand his role. Contrary to popular belief, he is not taking Jeff Keyes's place. He's in an advisory capacity. This bond issue is not in his scope of work. His scope of work is to come in here, to review Atlantic City, to talk about what a post-state takeover Atlantic City will be like. So everybody's saying, oh, get Jim Johnson's opinion, or Jim Johnson has this on his resume. That's, we're not, we're not here for that. More importantly, to the residents of Atlantic City, this is not new debt. We knew about this, we knew that this day would come, was coming. Fortunately, we're in a much better position to deal with it than in the past. And just to give you guys a, a, a education lesson on this, every first of the year at the reorganization meeting, you see something about paying your municipal taxes. It's an eighteen percent penalty. That penalty is put there to kind of make people pay their taxes. That's the same thing that the state of New Jersey did, it's not immune to Atlantic City. His job is for all municipalities. So, can you imagine, other towns, even though I know that we care about Atlantic City, can you imagine the Trentons of the world, the Norks of the world, the Candons of the world, the Pattersons of the world, get when, oh, the state is giving out freebies? They get more money than we do. Can you imagine the money that they gonna ask the state to forgive? So, this is, this is where we are, you know, with the situation. If we don't do this, I know a lot of you saying, if we don't do this, that seven hundred and ninety dollar number was thrown around, per one hundred thousand, you just do the math on the assessment. Those numbers were wrong, it's a lot worse. There was a miscalculation in our ratables for the residents. So, excuse me, so, that seven hundred and ninety dollars, north of seven hundred and ninety that I said was absolutely correct. We're looking at about eight hundred and twenty dollars per one hundred thousand, if we don't do this, if we raise this through taxes. We're not in a position to do that. The residents got a much deserved tax decrease for the first time in a while. And I know it felt good. You know, we have a lot of issues in Atlantic County. So we, we finally did something for our residents that was long overdue and provided them with relief. So, okay, the next option, I heard some people say, that if we don't do it, what happens? You know what happens, under the municipal, the municipal, the Municipal Stabilization Recovery Act, Tim Cunningham, who the director, Sheila Oliver, has gave, given the powers to, to overturn any council decision. And I hear some of you, you know, saying the word puppet, excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. I hear some of you using the word puppet, or, you know, City Council is not gonna do this. To my knowledge, City Council's over been overturned once. So, for you to say that, oh, the state controls the agenda, no, I control the agenda. I put what's on the council agenda. So I just wanted to set that record straight. Yeah, excuse me, the next time I'm gonna ask you to leave, we having a discussion. I respected everybody that spoke. As I was saying, it's saying, let, let the state do it. So, the same thing that the ones who fought against the state, that kicked screen and did whatever to save local control, by saying that the state is taking home rule and the state is usurping our authority, we would do the same thing to ourselves, by not taking action. That's gutless, that's spineless, and that's the coward way out, to say, hey, you know, we didn't do it, they did it. You gotta take a stand. You have to take a stand on these issues. So, if you are for stabilizing taxes, if you are possibly for lowering taxes, and like I said, you can ask the man himself, every conversation I have is about no tax increase. You will vote for this. And my colleagues, whatever way you vote, I respect that, but this is a challenge. This is real issues. By not voting for this, we are putting the taxpayers in harm's way. And by not taking any action on it, they're gonna say, see, they can't even make decisions, and they want local control. I'm not in the business of usurping our authority. And we're not gonna do that. And like I said, before we vote, since this thing happened in two thousand fifteen, and Mayor, you was the Council President then, Guardian was the Mayor, um, can you let council know your position on this issue?
From day one until day now, I've been opposed to anything that the state offered. When it come to the seventy-three million dollar loan, when it came to the Recovery Act, I thought, and I still believe, that the city has not taken control of its own destiny. I also agree with the fact that people elected us, and when they ask for certain things, we should basically offer them and allot them the opportunity to at least have their wishes or their demands concerned. What I will say is, we did not put the thirty-five million dollar debt on us. The state decided that. You didn't, we didn't, I didn't. So again, when it comes to making the decisions, I'm not a councilman. It's your decision. But my position is, again, to figure out better ways to deal with our finances. Because rather we basically go and take this bond out or not, we're still four hundred million dollars in debt. There'll still be tax increases coming, or potentially tax increases coming down the pipe. And at the end of the day, we have to really begin to deal with how we're gonna handle our financial house in terms of stabilizing our debt. So if that answers your question, or if it doesn't...
I, I understand that you're not a councilman, but at the same time...
I just gave you an answer, sir. And I believe the public have heard what I basically stated. I guess you're cutting me off? I gave you an answer. And if the public can understand what I just said, say yea.
Yea.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, we're not in for the theatrics of the moment, we just asked a simple question. It's important to know the mayor's position on it, because it's a council vote, we get that, this happened under your watch as Council President in two thousand fifteen. So, I mean, obviously, you was for it then, but you're against it now. The last point that I wanna make, and I can't speak for the state, they can do that themselves. There's also an option that, if this doesn't pass, yes, they can do it, we all know that. But there's also an option to say that, maybe they won't do it. So what do we do then? And when we talk about different things, I'm not in the, in the business to say no, just to say no. What is option C? We know what option A is, we know what option B is, and people saying, keep pushing it down the road. We have four public meetings on this, four, four. So, for the people who don't support this, when we lower the taxes by this vote, if it passed, please don't, because we gonna hold everybody accountable. Please don't take credit for flat taxes or tax decrease, because you didn't participate in the process. Call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
No.
Fault Leroy?
No.
Kurtz?
No.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
Yes.
Small?
Yes.
Six in the affirmative, three in the negative. Ordinance passes.
Move your agenda, please.
Ordinance number two is an ordinance to amend Sections one eleven dash nine and one eleven twelve of the code to increase fees.
May I have a motion? Move it. Second, moved by Randolph, second by Chabaz. Anyone from the public like to speak? Seeing none, public portion is closed. All right, any discussion? All right, call a vote.
Chang?
No.
Delgado?
No.
Fauntleroy?
No.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Six in the affirmative, three in the negative.
May I have a motion? The group ordinance, ordinance is on first reading, regular resolutions, and new business, please. So move it.
Second.
Moved by Randolph, second by Chabaz, starting off with final words. Well, I'll start off with Delgado. Delgado, who is? All right, Chabaz.
All right, Madam Clerk, for, um, under planning and development, um, I'd like to co-sponsor Resolution ninety-nine, one twenty-two, and one sixty. I have a question on, so I'd like to pull for a discussion, ordinance three B, like boy. I'd like to register a no vote on Resolution one-ten. I'd like to pull for discussion under revenue and finance, eighty-eight, and register a no vote for one thirty-three under revenue and finance, uh, under new business, pardon, not new business, also under revenue and finance for discussion, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-three. That is all.
All right, Marsh, keep it moving. All right, uh, Randolph, keep it moving. Chang?
Wait, I can't hear them.
So, uh, Marsh is fine. Paul, you need a minute?
Uh, yeah, just, I'm just going to check out something. One-ten was voted on already.
Oh, yeah, it was voted on already.
One-ten.
Oh, I just registering a no vote on one-ten. I did vote on, as long as the record is one-ten. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, Marsh is fine. Uh, Randolph is fine. Chang?
Uh, I want to register a no vote for, uh, one-oh-one.
I, I'm sorry, Councilman, I can't hear you.
Administration of governmental affair, uh, one-oh-one, I want to register a no vote.
One-oh-one, no vote?
Yeah, one-sixty-three, a no vote.
Okay.
I just want to register a no vote on one-oh-one, administration as well.
Okay. Councilman, you're okay? All right, Councilman Delgado?
I'm trying to group up all the legal contracts. I want to say no on all the legal contracts. I'm trying to give the numbers, forgive me, there's quite a lot.
There are, there's twenty something.
Exactly. Do you have the, do you have the idea, you have the number, can you?
Uh, they start at, um, one, one-twenty, I'm sorry, one, one-twenty-six.
So one-forty-second, right?
Well, then up to one-forty-eight, then one-fifty, fifty-one.
You have it, I recorded no on any, on all of those? And yes on the rest?
Six, three, seven. Okay, and Council President?
Um, yes, one-else.
Okay. So we'll be voting on first reading ordinance three A, that's amending chapter ninety-two, that's for the fire pit structure. Ordinance three C, and that's the municipal cap. Resolution seventy-nine, eighty, ninety-seven, ninety-nine, one hundred, one fifteen, one twenty-two, one twenty-three, one sixty, one, one-sixty-three, eighty-seven, ninety-three, one-oh-four, one-oh-five, one-oh-seven, one-eleven, one-fourteen, one-twenty, one-twenty-one, one-twenty-four, one-twenty-six, one-twenty-seven, one-twenty-eight, one-twenty-nine, one-thirty, one-thirty-one, one-thirty-two, one-thirty-three, one-thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, one-forty, one-forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, one-forty-eight, one-forty-nine, one-fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, one-fifty-four, one-fifty-seven, one-fifty-eight, seventeen, seventy-four, one-oh-one, one-oh-two, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-four, eighty-five, ninety-four, ninety-eight, one-twenty-five, one-sixty-one, one-sixty-two, ninety-six, one-fifty-five, and one-fifty-six. I have no votes registered, Councilman Tibbet, one-oh-one, no vote, Councilman Chang, one-oh-one, no vote, Councilman Chang, one-sixty-three, no vote, Councilman Kurtz, one-thirty-three, no votes, Councilman Delgado, resolutions one-twenty-six through one-forty-seven, one-forty-eight, one-fifty, and one-fifty-one, that's all the legal contracts. I have co-sponsored, Councilman Kurtz, on Resolution ninety-nine, one-twenty-two, one-sixty. Councilman Chabaz? You wanted to co-sponsor something?
Uh, one-fifty-two.
One-oh-nine and one-ten?
Yeah, and one-fifty-two.
One-oh-nine, one-ten, and one-fifty-two?
Yes.
Okay?
One-oh-one.
I'm sorry?
One-oh-one and one-oh-two, stay.
Randolph abstained, one-oh-one and one-oh-two. All in agreement? Okay, Chang? I'm sorry?
Before we continue, I just want a clarification. I'm trying to locate one-oh-one. Can you give me a brief synopsis of what that's about? Oh, okay. Got you. Can you record a no on one-oh-one?
Also, no vote, one-oh-one, Councilman Delgado.
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry.
Everybody good?
Can you, can you, can you co-sponsor for one-hundred and twenty-two?
Co-sponsor, Councilman Chang, one-hundred? Okay. All right, Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes, with all exceptions.
Fauntleroy?
No.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Has eight in the affirmative, one in the negative, and all the exceptions noted. So we have ordinance first for discussion, pulled by Councilman Kurtz, is ordinance three-B. This is establishing an electric and/or natural gas aggregation program.
May I have a motion? I made a motion.
Second.
Moved by Marsh, second by Randolph.
I was, I was looking to get a little bit of an explanation about, um, what this would do for, you know, Atlantic City and, and who, if anyone, is recommending, uh, this program is a good fit for us.
Want to talk about ordinance, uh, three-B or the aggregation program?
We, we should actually pull that ordinance, three-B. I thought the mayor wanted to speak on it, but it's not from him, so, uh, we could pull it until next time.
I guess, all right, so I, I wanted to get a little bit more detail on it. I read the backup that was on the ordinance and also did research, and it indicates that based on where it's been tried elsewhere in other states, that some places it's good and some places it's not good. And one of the things that, under the arguments that it's not good is if you're not one of the first places to institute an aggregation pro, uh, program, then you actually don't accomplish the cost savings that you're supposed to. So I was, uh, just, you know, I did some summary research that showed that it's a toss-up. I was looking to see if our professionals had vetted this and thought it was a good idea, so that's where I was coming from.
I, I don't think they have, Councilman, to that extent. I, I think the point of, we wanted to make this as a demonstration program to see, uh, how it would go, and, uh, my reason of being for it was that, uh, it wasn't going to cost the city any money, and it might be something that would be positive in the long run.
Cool, and I guess I'll, I'll support it for first reading, but of my record, my request of our professionals, especially we have good people at the state that maybe could connect us with some Board of Public Utilities research or something along those lines, is just an actual analysis that this would indeed help our ratepayers in town. Because, again, some of the research I read was that in some places this has been done, you get a discounted rate for a few months, and then, once you're locked in until you opt out, which in some places, even though the BPU says it's immediate, it takes a few bill cycles to get out of it, that you might get locked into a higher rate due to no, um, misintent on our end. Uh, I just, I'd like some professional opinion on this.
Mr. President, if you could, if we could vote on this for first reading and then, as my colleague said, uh, we'll reach out to DCA to get some, uh, backup.
Council President, before we go into vote, I'd also like to add that, if I'm not mistaken, last time I looked at the Public Utilities Act dealing with Title Forty, we as a municipality also had an opportunity to create a utilities, uh, board to review some of the issues so we can be a, uh, conduit of our, for our own nature to help in this whole process and not have to rely on the state itself, um, to review all the boards. So if need be, I can look into the exact statute that created utility boards and why municipalities are supporting them, too often they get monkey wrenches assuming that we don't read the law. I want to make sure.
Mr. President?
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fauntleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Somebody turn it off, man, so I can say yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes, thank you.
That's eight in the affirmative.
We should, we should have made this vote late.
We have Resolution eighty-eight. This was pulled by Councilman Kurtz. This is the temporary budget, number two.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Moved by Chabaz?
Second.
Second by Kurtz. Discussion.
In the Revenue and Finance Committee that I participated, we reviewed this budget. There was conversation about this particular bulkhead study for the stretch of bulkhead between Albany Avenue and the Expressway. And it appeared to me, based on the meeting, that we agreed to it finally after over a year to insert the three hundred thousand dollar local match so we could proceed with this Army Corps survey. And I read through the budget that we have on the agenda tonight, we got yesterday, and it's not in here. So I just, I wanted to know, why isn't the three hundred thousand dollars that we agreed to go in the temp budget not actually in the, uh, temp budget?
We discussed two options. One, inserting it in the budget and putting in a special one-time revenue, and the other was to look at our capital funds, and we have bulketing available funds in the capital funds to spend the three hundred thousand from there. And it was felt that some priority bonded for that, and that money is sitting not used at this point in time, that the better choice was to use the capital funds. And I've instructed the engineering department to prepare the paperwork to, to move forward with that because of our conversations.
Cool, I appreciate that. I, I know that if we voted on the temp budget approach, that, you know, myself as a councilman, I could look at anybody in the eyes that suffers from the flooding and say, yes, we took action, we put it in there and it got approved. I mean, has affirmative administrative action been taken to actually commit the three hundred thousand dollars to this survey this fiscal, um, excuse me, to this survey this fiscal year?
It's, because it's a capital, because it comes through the capital fund, it, it does not flow through the temporary budget. I've instructed the engineering department to prepare the requisition. So I would say, when they actually prepare the requisition, then you have administrative action. And as of our conversation earlier today, that had not taken place. I will follow up with the city engineer tomorrow and see what the status is.
Thank you very much.
Council President, I, I'd like to ask a question with regards to this and the bulkhead. How long have we had an issue with bulkhead that you're aware of, that meeting financing? Mr. Stinson, are you aware?
I'm not aware of the timeframe on the bulkhead.
You're not, you're not aware of the eroded bulkhead in the fifth and sixth wards?
No, I'm, I'm aware of there, but you're, you're asking an exact timeframe for the bulkhead being deteriorated. I'm not an engineer, I can't...
Do you have a year history? Do you have two years, possibly, three years?
I would say Councilman Kurtz and I have had discussions over the past year. I don't have an exact timeframe.
Just over the past year?
Yes.
Okay, because I recall quite a few times we've had discussions in public and, and other sessions before speaking about that. Because we had a road, we had a home in the sixth ward that was going to fall into the water because of bulkhead issues, and that's at least three years back. We have another one off of, I think, is Arizona, uh, Avenue, where the water came up to the point where all the homes were subjected to any kind of issues as far as water's concerned, and that's about two and a half years back. So what I'm leading to is that it's, it's good that we're trying to address this issue now, but we've had this issue a long time. And for you to tell me, or, or share to us that, that money was there in capital funds, I mean, that's money that's been sitting there for a minute. And in doing so, why couldn't we spend that money to be helpful?
I haven't turned down the use of those funds at this point in time. The engineer has to prepare, have specs prepared in order to do this. That's why this is a study being done. You, you'd have to ask that question to the engineer.
But if I'm not mistaken, please forgive me, because if I recall correctly, we've had studies done on the bulkheads. And I think had to do with the fact when the, uh, Jacustow, uh, the, the organization that came in in Oceans, when they came into Chelsea Heights, they did a bulkhead survey about the entire greater Chelsea Heights and Down Beach area. And in that survey alone, they spoke about all that stuff. So all the information that was necessary was available, and it was to no cost to us. And that was suggested to the state. Matter of fact, with Department of Treasury was there, we had a person, U.S. Department of Treasury here, the state was there. I remember the, the meeting that we had at Chelsea High School. All that information was readily available. This was no less than seven years ago. This was post-Sandy, so it's not, probably not Sandy. Um, it's not, probably not seven years, but it's longer than five years ago that we were aware of these issues, including the issues now. So if we're having issues of funding and financing, which of course prioritized sometimes was a high priority, but I'll say it's a disservice to us to keep waiting as long as we have for those bulkheads to be attended to if we knew we had funds in the capital fund. fund.
Again, I don't control, you know, I, the funds are there. It's up to the engineer to have the specs prepared and prepare a purchase order. I do not prepare the purchase order for the engineering department.
And who does that engineer answer to?
I believe Ben Kaufman.
And Ben Kaufman answers to who?
Answers to me.
District Administrator.
Stinson.
Councilman, trying to respond to your question in a bit more concise fashion. What I'd like to see happen and what we continue with is to identify funds for the project. If you notice, we had several emergency resolutions on council agenda. So we're prodding, planning, and development, and the engineers incorporate under that to prepare all the specifications and to identify the funds through revenue and finance so that these projects can move forward on an expeditions basis. So if there is funding and it's been squirreled away and it should have been utilized, we're attempting to get that funding to utilize it to arrest the types of issues that you're speaking of.
Be in agreement, I appreciate that part. All I'm saying is that we're talking about a survey, and I'm pretty certain a survey was done extensively, done by another agency that could have it in full elaboration of what's necessary for every avenue of understanding, including engineering. That was the Jacustow Institute that came to Chelsea Heights, and it was based post Sandy. You could talk about water flooding, and all that stuff about bulkheads was involved. It was very comprehensive. The entire package that they gave out to the public was no less than like 40 pages. So I'm pretty certain the ones that they can offer to the city without having to get another survey paid and another professional practice coming into the city and getting a paycheck, we should look into those resources. It was a Jacustow Institute, and it was specifically on water flooding and climate change.
I'll follow up with the engineer on that particular matter, see if he has that study and I'm aware.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Holt, one other request along those lines. We did take emergency action to address the bulkhead at Tallahassee Avenue in my ward, and I'm appreciative to everybody for doing that. But in following up since our council action, it seems that the process has been moving at a non-emergent pace through the various approvals and whatever bureaucracy it needs to go through. So I mean, I would make a friendly request if we could put an emergency priority in actually getting that purchase order or the requisition contract or the money, just so they can, so they can actually do the work. Because every day, the place still is caving into the bank.
No, I said I understood.
Nah, that was Phil Murphy listening in.
Thank you.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Present. Like that, right?
Fauntleroy?
That's a blast from the bat.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative. Resolution 39, which was pulled by Councilman Kurtz, and this is supplemental resolution one. This is corresponding with the bond ordinance number one.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Moved by Marsh, second by Randolph. Discussion.
Timing and process, this particular resolution didn't go through committee, and I got it today. So I'm just curious, for starters, what does this resolution do?
Jesse, just everything regarding the bond committee, our committee meetings and the public hearing is a part of, this is a companion resolution to the ordinance. So it's not separate and apart.
Got you. And to be, you know, to be fair, agreeing with your point, I'm just looking at the timeline, and it seems to refer from the, what I was able to read and gather from my quick reading today is that it applies to past actions that we've taken, namely, a series of bonds in past years as opposed to this future, not future, this current action that was approved tonight to do bonds. So I'm just curious, what does this do to actions that we've already taken?
Councilman Steve Pearlman, Pearlman and Miranda, Bond Counselor of the City. You were here when I spoke at the public meeting last week, when I mentioned the fact that this was a restructuring. This was not just about the 2018 deal. These resolutions go back and amend the prior deals to provide the mechanic so that when the IATs come in, they can be dispersed to all the bonds, not just the 18 bonds.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado? Fauntleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
No.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, two in the negative. Resolution 40?
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Moved by Chabaz, second by Randolph. Discussion.
Okay, you showed, I guess maybe this question would be to Mr. Pearlman, or maybe Mr. Cunningham. You guys showed a slide that, I believe the title was Order of Payment, that the new bond would be in order of payment. The IATs, which are from the casino, would be first in line. Qualified state aid or state revenues would be in second position. And then third position would be the general fund, AKA all of us, you know, residential taxpayers, not casino businesses. Does this resolution about past bond series change the order of priority of payment? Who's on the hook for it, to put it bluntly?
It adds a layer above. So there were two types, which is why you have two different supplemental resolutions. One dealt with the qualified bond to the state, the ones we get state aid, then taxpayer. And the others were non-qualified bonds where it was just taxpayer. What this restructuring did was put on top of both of them, meaning in a prior priority, IATs. Did not change, did not, did not change the order of what was there, but put something in ahead of them.
Okay.
Okay?
Procedurally, I don't know if it's appropriate to try to amend this resolution or make another one, but I'd like to make a motion to remove the general fund portion of the obligation. Because if I understand correctly, we're adding the IAT piece on top of these agreements. I'd like to remove the general fund slash residential taxpayers from the order of payment.
Yeah, you couldn't do that legally. I couldn't give the opinion, market wouldn't accept it. It's all tied into the fact that the town issues general obligation bonds under local bond law. Everything that happens flows from that. There's no legal way that I know of to do that.
So as a point of clarification, you're putting the IATs above everything else, higher priority?
Meaning higher priority of payment, of payment. Meaning if dollars are available, you would use the casino monies to pay back the debt service first, meaning that if there's enough, then below that, you don't have to pay, to your advantage.
The debt service.
Correct.
I guess specifically, I'm making a motion, as long as I'm advised, unless I'm advised that what I'm suggesting is illegal. So if, going back to what we went through that other meeting, if this is suggested it's illegal, I'll withdraw it. But I'd like to make a motion that we remove the people, AKA the general fund portion of the order of payment from the bond ordinance that was approved tonight.
I, am I allowed to comment? I don't change my advice that I gave 30 seconds ago. You do not have the ability to do that legally.
Call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
No.
Fauntleroy?
No.
Kurtz?
No.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Six in the affirmative, three in the negative. And we have resolution number 43.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second? Second, Mr. President?
Moved by Chabaz.
Randolph, Chabaz.
Moved by Randolph, second by Chabaz. I was having another conversation.
Do we have one leading this question?
Yeah, man, if Mook in the back can get you all the time.
All right, I guess if I'm not getting the second, that's fine, but I'm still making the motion more specifically to amend this resolution to delete section nine from the ordinance that we passed tonight.
Did you get that, Steve?
Yes, Councilman, sorry. It's the same, same provision, same concept, same answer.
That it's illegal?
You have no authority under local bond law to have payers without having the ultimate general obligation of the township. That is, the essence of issuing a bond under local bond law, is that the taxpayers, if there's no other revenues available, shall pay, if there's no other revenues available. You have to have that.
That's your professional opinion, uh, Steve? That's your opinion that you're giving, right? Your professional opinion?
Yes, sir.
Right.
All right, call a vote.
Chang? Delgado?
No.
Fauntleroy?
No.
Kurtz?
No.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Six in the affirmative, three in the negative. We are up to executive session.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Moved by Randolph, second by Chabaz.
Call a vote.
This is resolution 116. A, Day versus City of Atlantic City Workers' Comp/Settlement. B, Mooney versus City of Atlantic City Workers' Comp/Settlement. C, Sal Houdin versus City of Atlantic City Workers' Comp/Settlement. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fauntleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
And Small?
No.
Eight in the affirmative, one in the negative. About how long?
Ten minutes.
Council President, we're back on the record. We have three after executive session resolutions. 117, settlement for workers' comp, that's Day. 118, settlement workers' comp, Mooney. And 119, settlement workers' comp, Sal Houdin.
May I have a motion to group all together, please?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Chabaz, second by, I mean, moved by Randolph, second by Chabaz. Discussion. Seeing none, call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fauntleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative?
Motion to adjourn? Don't move.